I'd like to bring the order, the March 28, 2022, Order Supervisors Meeting for Powhatan County. If Mr. McClung will lead us in the Pledge Allegiance and Mr. Williams will do the invocation, I'd be grateful.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible, for ever and just as well.
Dear Father, thank you for another wonderful day in Powhatan County and all the many blessings we enjoy. Amen.
Do we have any requests to postpone agenda items, additions, deletions, or changes in the order of presentation? Motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Smith, County Administrator Updates?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to celebrate this month is coming up, April 22 is Earth Day. We have a proclamation from the Board of Supervisors in honor of Earth Day. And I'd like to read that. I guess we had some visitors here from anti litter. Would they like to join us? Thank you.
Come on up.
Whereas Powhatan County is a vibrant rural community that protects, preserves, and encourages the responsible use of its natural resources to ensure a strong sense of place where residents enjoy open space, farming, and superior outdoor recreational opportunities. And whereas Powhatan County and its residents take pride in their actions to protect the natural beauty of our county through responsible stewardship, a strong anti litter program, an annual clean business award, and protection of riparian areas. And whereas it's realized that Powhatan County civic and business groups and our citizenry must be more aggressive in its addressing environmental and quality of life issues. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize April 22, 2022 as Earth Day and urges all citizens to join the Powhatan County Earth Day Celebration on Friday, April 22 at the Courthouse Green in the Village of Powhatan from four o'clock till six o'clock PM. He had further proclaimed that the Powhatan Board of Supervisors commends the hard work and the dedication of the local Earth Day Coalition comprised of the Powhatan County Anti-Litter Council, Powhatan County Virginia Cooperative Extension, Powhatan County Administration, Powhatan County Public Schools, Powhatan County Monocent Soil and Water Conservation District, and the Chamber of Commerce. He had further proclaimed that the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors requested county departments and citizens join these organizations and recognize the importance of healthy environment and committing to taking positive and visible measures to protect and improve our environment and in helping to educate others to do the same. He had further proclaimed that the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors commits to support programs that further improve the lives of Powhatan County citizens and the natural environment in which we live and work. This is adopted by the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors on March 28, signed by Ned Smith, the clerk, and Mike Farley, Chair. I'd like to say a few words that... Thank you.
I'm Betty McCracken. I'm the chair of the group. That's a loose affiliation there, but I'd like to invite everybody to come. It's going to be a very simple celebration this year and we're going to start back from COVID kind of softly. So we invite you to come.
Thank you, Ms. McCracken.
Thank you.
Can I say?
Yes, please.
My name is Kathy Howland and Gay and I are representing the Anti-Litter Council and we wanted to give each of you a clean, non-use grabber. So if you want to pick up litter in your area of the woods, we would love to have you join us. These were actually part of a grant, a small grant that Goochlin, Powhatan, and Henrico went in on together. So we have 100 of these. So we're giving these to you all and the school board and then some of the groups that pick up litter on a regular basis as well.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have public comment period. I'd like to address some of you because there's such a large crowd here this evening that as we have many public hearings and if you're wishing to speak on one of the topics during the public hearing, I would suggest to you that you speak during that timeframe, not during the public comment period. And if you don't have any questions or if you have questions, there's agendas at the back of the room on the desk as to whether it's a topic that you want to speak on that's in one of the public hearings. The other thing that I'd like to make you aware of is we are going to have an appeal on a solar facility this evening. And if you are here to speak on that appeal, you are very welcome to say whatever you want to say, but it is on an appeal. It's not whether the Board of Supervisors approves or denies a solar facility in Powhatan County. It's only an appeal due to a decision that was made by the Planning Commission at their previous meeting. So if you've got any questions about that, that's what we're going to be talking about tonight, the appeal, not whether it's a facility that we approve or don't approve. At that point, I'll now open up the public comment period for anyone to come down and speak publicly. You have three minutes as an individual. You will have five minutes if you're representing a group. And I'd also like to let you know that people speaking before the board may not be vulgar, rude, or use profane language. The public may speak on any issue that is germane to county business. The public comment period shall not include criticism of specific individuals or attacks on any person or group. No political campaigning or promoting of a business is permitted. The public comment period is now open.
Mr. Chairman, please, before we get started. Could we make it clear that if you're interested in the solar appeal, this is your only chance to speak. There will be no public hearing period.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cox. I appreciate you bringing that to my attention. And Mr. Cox is 100% correct. If you want to speak on that, your public comment period is the only time that it is available. There is not a public hearing for an appeal on a decision made by the Planning Commission in Powhatan County. The floor is open to the public.
I'm Terry Adcock, District 5, 5719, Cartersville Road. I'm speaking on Bell Dale Solar. There's a vote tonight if this industrial project is in accordance with the 2021 Comprehensive Plan. I represent the 30 surrounding residents with signs in their yards and 107 other Powhatan residents that have signed petitions opposing this project. The surrounding residents came together as a community and spent months researching and sending me information that supports why this industrial use doesn't belong in our rural community. The letter from planning to the adjacent residents states this parcel is designated as rural area and protected lands. On the Comprehensive Plan Use Map in the 2021 Long Range Comprehensive Plan, this industrial use does not belong on this parcel. There are 146 pages in the Comprehensive Plan and the applicant will focus on page 76 about solar and not the entire Comprehensive Plan. There are seven other pages in the Comprehensive Plan that address protected areas, rural conservation areas, and historic preservation that I highlighted and gave each of you members. Powhatan County Planning Board voted that this parcel was not in accordance with the 2021 Comprehensive Plan. We gave you a list of why they said that Bell Dale is not in accordance with the Comprehensive Plan. Powhatan has not had the major runoff problems that has been experienced in other counties around Powhatan. Also provided you with what happened in four other counties and when solar manufacturing plants were put on land with similar steep slope terrain as this parcel. The Comprehensive Plan says that steep slopes above 15% grade should be protected areas. Not just the parcel, but the 350 acres that will be solar panels have grades well above 15%. For planning board feedback, one of the reasons they said this was not in accordance with the Comprehensive Plan was that the solar would increase runoff a minimum of 15 to 30%. If you combine these grades, the disturbance from all the stump removal and increased runoff from the solar will be destroyed. Deep Creek, 835 acres classified swamp on this parcel, and the downhill wildlife corridor. What about the James River? We are less than a mile from the James River. We provided you each with a picture of the flooding on Deep Creek Friday two weeks ago. This has been occurring since best managed practices were not practiced when the timber on the 1100 acres was cut all at once two years ago. Add the 15 to 30% additional runoff from the solar. What a disaster we have in our county. My supervisor for District 5, Karen Farmax, campaign theme was Powhatan Worth Preserving. This is she bagged the bag she gave to all of us that helped with her election. My question to you is, is putting Bell Dale Solar Manufacturing Plant up against the wildlife quarter and on protected lands and on a rural conservation area with massive runoff potential preserving Powhatan and District 5?
Thank you, Ms. Adcock.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Blake Cox. I'm with the Virginia Land and Liberty Coalition. We're a project of conservatives for clean energy and we advocate for smart and responsible clean energy here in Virginia. That's two words I like to focus on is smart and responsible clean energy. After studying this project or reviewing the application, going back, watching some planning commission meetings, board meetings, I think we have an excellent example of smart and responsible in the Bell Dale Solar Project. It has all the qualities of a smart and responsible solar project, a great use of land, robust setbacks and buffers, preserving priority conservation land, protecting our wildlife and the environment, strong community input, and the respectful economic development opportunity it is for the county. If you remember from where this project started to where it is now is nothing short of remarkable. The land use cut by over two-thirds, setbacks and buffers doubled, and increased in the property tax benefit by over 200%. All of this while still maintaining viability of the project for a landowner. The effort on this project to involve and engage the community, the community and neighbors is nothing short of impressive and should be applauded. So please continue to support property rights of landowners and allow them to use their land as they please, as long as the rights of others, of their neighbors are not being violated. So we urge you to move forward this appeal and Bell Dale Solar for the county to continue to be a leader in smart and responsible clean energy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kenneth Thatcher, 3617 Trenton Road, Honorable Chairman and other members of the Board of Supervisors. I had a question and I spoke with the planning director about it, this requirement that in this particular type of CUP on a solar energy facility that was a vote required about whether the request was in compliance with the Comprehensive Plan. And I looked up that code section that it pointed me to. I know it far be it from a regular citizen to be able to read a state code section of Virginia. But I did read through it and there's no requirement in that section that for a solar facility that the Planning Commissioner, you know, vote whether it's in compliance with the CUP or not. There are some statements in there as how it might be approved. And one of them is that for such solar facilities to be advertised and approved and currently in a public hearing process can be with a rezoning, special exception, or other approval process. And now it's stated in the zoning, the process is a CUP for a solar facility in Powhatan County. And the only other requirement in there, it says that locality may have a vote as to whether they want to go by what the Comprehensive Plan calls for. So they can just have an up and down vote on it from the beginning, whether they want to go by what the Comprehensive Plan calls for. If they want to say they ignore that, then they can ignore it. But there's no requirement in there that they vote, well, it's in compliance with the CUP. And of course, if they voted that it wasn't in compliance with the CUP, I mean, that would be a vote to not approve. The other element is, I don't know what your vote would be tonight. I hope you'll do, you know, maybe one or three things, that you'll just vote to return it back to the Planning Commission, that you would not vote whether it's in compliance with the Comprehensive Plan. Because if you did, that would terribly prejudice any decision going forward. And in the event that y'all voted against it when it came back, that on appeal process, I mean, if you voted it's in compliance with the Comprehensive Plan, I mean, you know, game over. No, you shouldn't go any further on that. So and then some other things as far as the terms used, that solar facility, you say solar farm here in Powhatan, but nowhere in the state code of Virginia is solar farm used in terminology or any of the language. So you're talking about something in Powhatan that isn't even addressed in the state code of Virginia as far as talking about the code requirement of solar facilities. Thank you. Appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening. David Brown, 3492 Richards Run, Powhatan, Virginia, District 3. Regarding to the solar farm, you've had Mr. Adcock present, like 107 people, 30 some people live around there. They don't want this in their backyard. First, I just meant to go talk about clean, cheap energy. We'll see how well that's working up in California and Texas. That bad winter didn't do very good for them. California's gonna have rolling blackouts all the time. Solar farm is just a gimmick. When anybody says, we have plenty of coal, use that. As far as that land up there, I spent 20 years on that land hunting it, though pretty much every inch of it. They're gonna do it, put it on the backside of the power line down towards Davis Creek, so nobody's got to look at it. Better off, don't even do it. Something else I see that we don't have a public comment period on is about our personal property tax rate and our real estate tax rate. I presume y'all are voting on that tonight. What I hear is we're not going to lower the tax rate. Everybody's sitting up there except for Mr. McClung's, he didn't run a couple of years ago. He may run on it too. I know the other four sitting up there ran on cutting taxes. Well, if you ain't cutting taxes, you're not doing what you said you were going to do. The people say, well, we, you know, we can't cut taxes. Excuse me. That's bull. Well, I understand we're advertising for Assistant County Administrator up to $150,000 a year. If that's the case, let me know where I can apply for it and when my interview is. And that is a question, Mr. Farley, a question. So please, as I put in writing last month, when I ask a question, I do expect an answer. If you can't give me an answer, or you don't want to give me an answer, just send that to me in three days. I don't think I was asking too much. Yes, there is an answer. No, I don't want to give you an answer, or I don't care. Any of the three is just fine. And we got to have Assistant County Administrator. We got a problem. This county is not that big. You know, we spend money like a bunch of drunken sales. We got a president up in the White House right now who's running this country in the ground with inflation. And I'm sorry if I'm picking on somebody criticizing somebody, but those are facts. And we're going to go out here and keep hiring people and hiring people? We've lost our mind. Y'all were elected to run this county. Y'all are the bosses, not a county administrator. If that's the case, we'll vote for the county administrator. We don't. So please consider what you're doing before you go out here and throw away our tax money. School system, 60% of the budget. I know y'all can't tell the school system how to spend the money. But here again, we got a superintendent, a couple of assistant superintendents, a principal, two assistant principals. We got more administration than any county around, and it's pathetic. So please think before y'all do these things tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hello. My name is Robin Duncan. I live at 5809 Anderson Highway, but I own a parcel on 5490 Cartersville Road, which is very near the project. I totally agree Drew Price has done a great job doing everything he can to make as much as what their knowledge is right now for how to prevent erosion and have great effects. I mostly wanted to say, and I know the vote is a little different. It's not like you're voting on this tonight. You're voting, you know, but I just want to bring up another issue. And it has to do with antibiotics and multi-drug resistance. I have worked as an acute care nurse practitioner at St. Mary's Hospital a few years back. We have cards that are laminated in the office and those cards guide us in what we're treating infection wise. Whether it's community-acquired pneumonia, hospital-acquired pneumonia, infection from a wound, whatever. Those cards that are laminated there for us literally come from the soil. The soil in your region determines that. I know we're doing everything that we say we can do for the erosion, but even the erosion will affect that. Because bacteria that lived in the soil, literally, that's their home. And that's another reason they tell you to eat locally. It's not just to support your local community. It's to keep down your multi-drug resistant bacteria because the bacteria growing there that has resistance to say Bancomycin, something runs down the road and washes in. It can then breed that resistance to another bacteria that doesn't have it. So I think there's a lot more. We can always add a solar farm. We only have, we have three already. So if we want to do one later, and I know he's done a lot of work, sure. But I think we need to consider this more carefully because there are things that we don't even think about that are going to be affected. I think that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
For a comment that's outside of the presentation later. This is just my public comment. Is it okay?
Just a couple of comments.
It's not about the land use. My name is Jane Lloyd. I live at 36 Hatcher Road. I'd like to share just a few statements from the same person. When asked what type of programming she would enjoy being offered, she said, I go to lifelong learning in Chesterfield and have enjoyed and laughed so much through participation in many various classes or in the daily virtual lounge made available while lifelong learning had their physical space shut down. I'd like to see something in Powhatan. Wouldn't it be wonderful to have technology training offered for new phones or iPads or laptops? And in an email provided to the board when we presented in August of 2020, she said, seniors like to visit and talk, play cards, do puzzles, read, discuss and exchange books, eat and exchange recipes, learn through interesting lectures on countless topics, paint and draw, learn a foreign language and exercise. Board of Supervisors, if you could please find a place where we could come together daily, it would be so nice. I share these quotes tonight because it's Ramona Thompson who spoke these words. A strong, fit, active, vibrant, generous woman. Just over three months ago, an unexpected surprise diagnosis. She's now in hospice and unresponsive. She fought for this. She believed in it. She volunteered and she advocated. And when it happens, she won't be able to enjoy it. I saw Ramona yesterday and spent time with her and promised her that she'd be part of this discussion tonight. This is not a low-income need. This isn't a transportation need. This is a need for challenging activities, socialization, learning and engagement felt by countless individuals that I hear from who happen to just be closer to the end of their death than the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Cordelia Davis and I'm 1605 Cook Road in Powhatan, lived in Powhatan all of my 70-plus years. Love Powhatan. And I'm here to speak on behalf of a standalone senior center. We have visited Charlottesville and they have a beautiful center. We don't want anything on that scale, but we would like to have something that we can go to as seniors. And a senior citizen, according to AARP, is anyone over 55 years or older. We have people, you see them at the drugstore, you see them at Walmart, you see them at places. And there are seniors who sit home and have nowhere to go. A building where we, right now, we're at the Rescue Squad Building. We're in one open space. But it would be nice to have a space where if you want to come and do pickleball, or you want to come and play cards, or you want to come and exercise, do crafts, you have your own separate area. Right now, I think that if Powhatan have the money, have the land, and Lord knows we have the need. So I'm thinking, you know, why can't we have a standalone senior citizens? We all will benefit as each of us in here is getting older. If you look through here, about 75% or more are 55 years and older. So then, you know, we just need, we could be together. We're not talking about low income. We talk about people everywhere. Powhatan. Powhatan is more than one person. Powhatan is all of us working together to make it better for all of us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Not seeing anyone else come down for the public comment period? There's one here.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Brown. I live at 4550 Anderson Highway. And I own a farm, like several of you. And several years ago, when I was thinking about what to do and I was appointed to the Planning Commission, Mr. Cox said to me, it's all a process and you learn through the process. And sometimes the pieces fit now and sometimes they fit later. Does that sound like you? And when it comes to the solar farm and looking at it, it has been a process. And we've had to go and sift through a lot of beliefs and then go find the facts. And one of the things that I, I'm a researcher, so I have looked at all those and I am comfortable. And some of this land comes down and flows into the drainage into my property. That solar panels do not damage water. They are not dangerous to bees. They do not kill birds. So in fact, more birds fly into buildings than into solar panels. I don't know about you, but I've collected at least five each year. Yeah, gruesome. But one of the other things that I have learned is that there are areas in the country, notably Indiana, Minnesota, Arizona, that are using solar farms in an agricultural area. And they have under them pollinator plantings and they have beehives. The panels here are high enough that you can put beehives under them and do commercial beekeeping. They also are used for goats and for sheep. Goats represent the fourth most common agricultural animal in the community, the first being pullets. About fourth is the horses, but they tend to be recreational and not really used for agriculture. So as an industrial use, it doesn't have to be. And maybe part of the process is a condition that enables the solar operator to put in or requires them to put in some agricultural use, since that is a wave of the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Lindsay Ak. I live at 2813 Maidens Road. Powhatan County has designated this parcel as a rural area and protected lands. The description of protected lands in the Comprehensive Plan is perennial stream corridors, flood plains, wetlands, or and/or steep slopes over 15% of the grade. The part of the parcel where the solar panels have been proposed to be located has all of these features. Particularly the south side of the power line where four streams converge and run under proposed panels into major creeks that slope well above the 15%. So it would seem that this is not in in line with the the rural designated areas and protected lands. So hoping that you vote against the solar. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amy Wood, 5635 Cartersville Road. Excuse me, I just broke my glasses in the car, so this might be a little hard. I did a little research too. I was trying to decide what does in accordance mean? I did not come up with an exact definition, but I did find from a neighboring county some conditions that a solar committee came up with for their CUPs for their solar projects. I'm going to read as many of these as I can, just to maybe give you a little bit of food of thought about is this in accordance with Powhatan County Comprehensive Plan? These are their different conditions that they have. They have a construction, traffic management and mitigation plan, a construction, traffic control plan, a construction mitigation plan, traffic, traffic safety requirements for employees. The construction and deconstruction hours are Monday through Friday, not Monday through Saturday. The vegetation is to be established and maintained throughout life of project. Noise reduction on adjacent property lines. County staff training for EMS if requested, height maximum of the entire project. Approval of an erosion and sediment control and storm water plan with the surety plan posted with county prior to any land disturbance activity. For soil stabilization, the project is developed in stages. There is an onsite storm water management and erosion sediment control manager. The applicant will provide individual responsible for performing daily inspections of storm water and erosion and sediment control. Practices and devices installed throughout construction. This individual provide the county a weekly status report of project and any issues. The county may hire an independent engineer of its choice for weekly progress check that's to be paid by the applicant. The applicant must post a $500,000 bond to ensure compliance with CUP at time of the site plan approval letter. Bond may be released after six months of completion. There must also be no outstanding damage to downstream properties that is attributed to the project. Two more to go. One is a project liaison. The applicant or operator shall designate at least one public liaison. Publicize a toll free phone number and email address for communications with liaison during construction and post it on temporary signs that each access. Information should appear on operator website and county website. Will act as a point of contact between citizens and construction crews. Should be available in person and by phone during active construction hours and shall respond to any related questions of the facility or property within 24 hours. Shall begin at the pre-construction meeting. Monthly reports detailing complaints and resolutions provided to the county during construction and six months afterwards. The final condition that I've noted was a pile driving notice. Adjacent owners notified seven days prior to start of any pile driving activity. Just want y'all to think about those and if this is in accordance with our comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Not seeing anyone. Mr. Smith, anyone on Zoom?
Yes, sir. Mr. Max Timberlake, please go ahead with your comments.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members. My name is Max Timberlake, 1479 Dorset Road. I thought I had it unmuted.
Mr. Tim, I can see you're not on mute, but I don't hear you.
Let me try a different.
Now you're on mute. You're on mute, Mr. Timberlake.
Did I get unmuted yet?
Yes, sir. There you go. Yes, sir. You're good to go.
Oh, don't don't touch another button, right? I'm Max Timberlake at 1479 Dorset Road. Today I'm representing Powhatan Farm Bureau Federation as president. I'm presenting my comments in writing in case I'm not able to attend the meeting in person. Although not directly related to issues on the agenda tonight. I need to address a serious problem that has concerned me for some time. That is a use of the term farm by the solar industry. The term farm has been stolen by this solar industry. And it's been used to their advantage because it sounds good. If you ask the common person, what is a farm? Most would describe a farm as livestock crops, forest vineyard, among many other agricultural operations. The only way to resolve this serious violation of definition is to remove any and all links between solar and farm in our county documents and our everyday conversations. Okay, on with the important issue of the agenda tonight. Board of Supervisors expected to rule if the CUP for Bill Dale Solar Industrial Project on Cartersville Road is in compliance with the Powhatan Comprehensive Plan. Our Farm Bureau Board believes the Bill Dale CUP is not in compliance. Let's review some background. This project was turned down once several years ago. Most importantly, the Powhatan Planning Commission has already turned down the CUP for the second time at the March first public hearing. There's been an influx of solar projects in the state of Virginia and here in Powhatan. Because of this influx, many states and counties have struggled to develop rules and regulations and ordinances for these projects. Unfortunately, the big money continues to win. And many counties like Buckingham and Louisa have experienced the catastrophic effects of unacceptable regulations of solar. As a result, below are the official positions of Virginia Farm Bureau Federation regarding how solar affects the state's agriculture and forest community. My policy standpoint, Virginia Farm Bureau neither supports or opposes solar energy. I apologize, I'm taking a little bit longer here because I'm getting out of breath. We believe most studies should be done on the impact of this utility scale energy has on agriculture. We support the utility scale solar facility being located on marginal lands. This section of the gen, the session of the Virginia General Assembly has passed legislation covering issues to protect Farm Bureau. Many legislators across the state, including our own delegates. Delegate where have worked on regulations. Back in Powhatan. The Powhatan Agricultural and Forestal District Advisory Committee. And many private citizens have provided input to the comprehensive plan. That covers many of the same issues involved in natural resources. Again, Farm Bureau believes that most studies should be done on the impact of solar industry projects as this. Attached is a review of the Bill Lars solar CUP conducted by the Monocent Solar and Water District. This letter has identified a number of concerns, especially related to the proximity to deep creek. One of the many critical issues is the topology and the major drainage ditches that run into deep creek. That is less than a mile from the James River. I believe most of the site for the for the parcels will require the tree stumps to be removed. Imagine how much soil erosion will occur on the slopes when all these tree stumps are dug out. In conclusion, the comp plan has been has been viewed in total and does require some careful judgment if this property is suited for the industrial project. It is not a farm. I ask the supervisors stand up for the big money and vote no to the Bill Dale CUP compliance. I thank you for your time and your service in Powhatan because I am just a farmer, plain and simple.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else, Mr. Smith? Zoom is clear, Mr. Chairman. Okay, great. We will close the public comment period, moving on to the consent agenda. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Consent agenda passes. New business. Next, we have a presentation by Dr. Judy Kane Oliver with the Senior Action Committee. Ms. Oliver?
I think this is ready to go. Let me first say that I am representing the Senior Action Committee, and I would like for the committee members to stand to be recognized. We have many of them here tonight, as well as other people who are also supporting the efforts of the Senior Action Committee. What is the Senior Action Committee? It is a grassroots effort to bring attention to the needs of the aging population in our community. The purpose? To understand the needs of seniors in our community. To improve dissemination of information to seniors about programs, services and resources. And just as a side note, I would say that today I got confirmation that I have a guest speaker from Massey Cancer Center coming to Powhatan or willing to speak with with Powhatan later this month. But the dissemination of that information becomes very time intensive to be able to publicize that as due to the lack of structure that we have right now. Also to advocate for additional programs, services and resources. And to advocate for a person, permanent space for seniors to be able to gather, learn, interact and volunteer. Our mission statement is simply is an organization committed to planning, promoting and supporting the healthy aging of seniors in the county. We endeavor to accomplish this by empowering and supporting seniors. Developing and facilitating programs and expanding services to promote healthy living. Let me just add a few facts about Powhatan seniors currently. As you all probably know, according to the 2020 statistics, there are over 5,000 seniors living in Powhatan. Comprising about 17% of our population, and that number is growing. Currently, we have multiple sources, just to name a few, churches, communities, organizations, social services that provide services, resources for the aging population. The problem is that there is little coordination of the services and resources, which affects accessibility and puts a strain on the volunteers. More seniors use the local food bank than any other age group. And other areas similar to Powhatan have demonstrated a commitment to seniors by supporting a dedicated senior center. There are over 80, approximately 80 senior centers around Virginia right now, and many of those are in rural areas. Some even smaller areas than Powhatan. The action that we have taken to date, and let me just say that it was in September when I first came to say to you all who I was and that I had organized this and I would be back with a report. So since September, we have done a lot of engagement with community stakeholders, meeting with pastors, the YMCA Coalition of Churches, civic organizations, the leader of the Free Clinic, et cetera, and that communication is still ongoing. We have also held two town hall meetings since December. We had a presence at the parade. And then we've had people collect, fill out surveys. To date, we've had 199 surveys completed and 97% of the respondents support the senior center. The top three types of programs desired of a senior center. Social activities, recreational activities and information, including learning. So what is a senior center? Our vision of a senior center is a standalone building that can serve as an information center for community based resources for seniors, as well as a place that provides opportunities for socialization, lifelong learning and intergenerational interaction and engagement. While this space would be dedicated to seniors, it would allow for community involvement from all age groups. And let me say that the kind of senior center that we envision would be the kind of center that in the morning you might have a class about good nutrition, meal planning based on a budget, and in the evening you would have a class on gourmet cooking. So it would serve a range. Who are the people who benefit from a senior center? I'm not using real names, but these are real instances. Mary Jane, who moved from with her husband to Powhatan to be near family, and her husband died soon after relocating. Mary Jane knows no one and she wants socialization and she's looking for a new purpose in her life. Mr. And Mrs. Jones, who live on a limited income and are clients at the Free Clinic while depending on the community food bank to get by. They need knowledge about services and resources. Mr. Smith, a company CEO who has worked out of town for 34 years, recently retired. Now he's looking for a new opportunity to give back, to volunteer, and again, find a new purpose. And then finally, the community at large through intergenerational activities and volunteerism. Few facts to consider. A disproportionate number of seniors live in rural areas. And this next one is particularly concerning to me. Older adults in rural areas enter nursing homes at higher rates, younger ages and showing less impairment than their metro counterparts. Research shows consistently that there are four main factors that can, that contribute to healthy aging. And those are good nutrition, exercise, continued learning and socialization. None of those four things are cost prohibitive. And according to the U, to the national statistics, the US population is aging. By 2030, nearly 20% of the population will be 65 years and older. And again, many of those people are relocating to rural areas. Our society and culture are very different today than they were 30 years ago. Families are no longer able to support people as they age like they once were. Our initial recommendations for supporting seniors is that we would ask that the board identify a dedicated space to support so, social activities, recreation, learning and educational activities. We also ask for the infrastructure to support these activities and for a director to lead the community efforts to grow and develop Powhatan Senior Center. And then I want to leave you with the top 10 reasons for supporting a senior center. 10. Social connectedness contributes significantly to an older person's mental and physical well being. Nine. The aging population is increasing, and as the numbers grow, the needs for resources and services also increases. Eight. Senior citizens, senior centers help to bring, break down the barriers to accessibility and care. Seven. Senior centers facilitate coordination of services currently available and facilitate communication. Six. Senior centers are a cost effective means to provide additional resources and programs. And I might say that I wouldn't mind being able to come to a senior center to to learn more about technology from a high school senior, nor would I mind going to a senior center to be able to provide tutoring or reading support. nor would I mind going to a senior center to be able to provide tutoring or reading support to an elementary-age child. Five, multi-generational programs can strengthen the community ties, improve interagency coordination, and stretch taxpayers' dollars. Four, seniors are the pillars of our community. As you all well know, seniors are the foundation of the food bank, Christmas mother, the clothes closet when it existed, the educational foundation, 4-H, and I could go on and on. The experience and wisdom of seniors benefit all of us. Because we age, we all have the ability to benefit from a senior center. And because we age, it does not diminish our purpose and relevance. And then finally, I will say that I've had the privilege, I work as a therapist, and over thirty years I have had the privilege in this community to meet with many wonderful seniors who are talented and informed. Life can change quickly, sometimes on a dime, due to the loss of job, health, mobility, family. And it can become, life can become like Whitewater Rapids. I believe that a senior center could help benefit a lot of people navigate those transitions. Finally, we look forward to hearing back from you with your decision about your interest and willingness to support a senior center. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Board members, any comments, any questions? I have a comment. Thank you for coming out and sharing the knowledge that you've gained from many seniors in this county, of which I qualify. As you were giving the statistics, I thought it was quite interesting, one thing there, and many of you, I was at one of your town halls and spoke, and I think there's a way to work something out here that's to answer, you don't need to wait for my position. My position is pretty clear. I think there's an opportunity there to take care of some situations to help improve our relationship with seniors and how to move forward. And as you were giving me some statistics, giving us all statistics, I was listening. We spent a lot of money in this county, as other people know and pay attention to. Fifty-eight percent goes to schools. It's a little over fifty million dollars of our budget. The one thing that got me is I was sitting here listening to you say five thousand seniors live in this county. There's about forty-three hundred students that go to this county. We need to provide the best education we can, but we also need to find a way to look out for our aging population. Thirty-five million for schools. It could go on and on and on. So I don't think you're asked as being anything ridiculous in my mind. I think there's probably a lot of questions that need to be answered moving forward, but I do applaud you for coming out and sharing your information, and thank you to all of you who are in attendance tonight. Next on the agenda, Resolution R. Twenty-two-oh-nine, calendar year, personal property tax.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. On page thirty-eight of your board package, you'll see a list of tax rates proposed for the personal property tax for two thousand twenty-three. Basically, a three dollars and sixty cents per hundred rate for personal property, business personal property, and machinery and tools, and a negligible number for veteran person, veterans' personal property, volunteer fire personal property, and handicap modified vehicles. So that on page thirty-eight of your agenda package, you'll see that list of proposed rates.
I move to approve Resolution R. Twenty-two-dash-oh-nine as presented.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Mr. Smith. Are we forced to list disabled veterans' personal property and volunteer fire and rescue personal property of the rate is so? It's nothing. I mean, so why do we have that in?
I think under the Dillon rule that we're not allowed to to make it free, but we can't allow to set a rate, so we have set a rate. Thank you.
I like that transparency. All in favor, say aye.
We need a roll call.
Roll call, I'm sorry. Roll call, Mr. Smith.
Mister Williams. Mister McClung.
Aye.
Mister Cox.
Aye.
Miss Carmack.
Aye.
Mister Bailey.
Aye.
Next up, resolving R. Twenty-two-dash-ten, calendar rate, real estate tax rate.
Mr. Chairman.
Would you like to make a motion, Mr. Cox?
Yes, I would. Like to make a motion that we defer R. Twenty-two-dash-ten until our regular April meeting to give the board an opportunity to explore real estate's tax decrease. So it's a motion to defer.
You have a second?
It doesn't need a second, but I'll second it.
We need a roll call on that.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So why a deferral? One, inflation is at a forty-year-high. It's impacting all of us. Rapidly inflated home values. COVID and supply chain interruptions, Ukraine and China, and a commuter community which is adversely impacted by high gas prices. But probably more important, there are ample funds to have a two to three cents decrease in the tax rate. Holly, could you put up the one that says tax rate? And if you would pass those down, please. This is from the twenty-two-three operating budget. And if we blow it up right in the middle, you see where the, yeah, where it says contingency fund under community development. This is operating budget funded by revenues from this year. We have a contingency fund which has had no discussion, was not singled out by the county administrator, but has an increase of one million, four hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars for some unexplained purpose. That will fund three cents. So the money is sitting there. We already have it in the budget, and I think we need to have a discussion about how to use this money and whether the tax decrease is in the best interest of the community. So it's not about a decision. It's about we need more discussion, particularly when the money is sitting right there in front of you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Sure, Miss Carmack.
I would like to, I don't. Last year, March nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one, we all agreed to a seventy-nine cent tax rate. Somebody came down today and mentioned that this board had assured the public we would have lower taxes. In a two-year timeframe, we've lowered the tax rate nine pennies. Last year, Mister Smith worked diligently for months, doing different modeling to ensure we would not be caught off guard by any unforeseen circumstances. We spent months deliberating over various tax rate scenarios, and some of us mentioned that we were concerned that seventy-nine cents was too low, in fact. Probably more importantly, we all agreed we wanted to take the political football off the table and set a rate that we can all agree upon and be comfortable with. Therefore, I am going to maintain, I am comfortable with the current tax rate of seventy-nine cents for the following reasons. We wanted to be regionally competitive. Seventy-nine cents ensures that. We all agree fiscally well-run counties have a set tax rate. It doesn't get adjusted on a whim or for political gain. We agree a set tax rate provides stability. That's what we're going for, kind of encounter to Mister Cox's statements. We have an erratic stock market, inflation, a fluctuating economy, compression issues that we have all said that we wanted to address, increased wages, and hiring challenges. Playing fortune teller has not worked out well for us. Mister Cox, Mister Williams, and myself, two years ago, voted to keep the tax rate too high. We, in fact, could have lowered it. It's really our fiduciary responsibility to go with the plan that we put in place last year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mister Williams.
I agree with Mrs. Carmack's statements. But yeah, last year, we did agree that we wanted to bring the tax rate down and get it to a rate where we were all comfortable with. I never said the rate was seventy-nine cents. Anybody wants to go back and check the record, they can. But any plan gets nuanced. Once you open the plan like any business plan, things around you change, and the plan has to change. And you've heard me say this before. You're the workforce for the Richmond region. Jobs aren't in Powhatan County. Well, as long as I can remember the history of Powhatan, going back to the Old Testament, people have been going to Richmond and Racco, Chesterfield, to a lesser extent, Hanover, where the jobs are. Now, if you don't believe me, go out on Route sixty in the morning, and you'll see the tide go out. Crossovers don't work. And then in the evening, come back, we can set up some lawn chairs, and we can watch the tide come back in. So right now, if you're looking at the gas prices, and if you've lived long enough like I have, again, like Mister Bailey, I'm a senior citizen, I'm probably his senior. But if you go back and look at the gas prices when we had back at the OPEC embargo, I remember that. Now we're at four dollars and higher, and there's no end in sight. There isn't anything out down the radar that says it's going to go down anytime soon. And Miss Carmack's right again. As Mark Twain says, predicting is a very difficult business, particularly when it comes to the future. I'm not predicting the future. What I'm observing is what I'm experiencing every day. I'm filling up my tank. I'm doing ten gallons, I'm not doing thirty-two gallons. Going to Food Line, I'm looking for items on the shelf I can't find. The ones I do find, the prices have gone up exponentially. So this is not fast-forwarding to the future. This is today. Going back to why, you know, it's important for us as the workforce for the region, we depend on gas. We don't have public transportation in Powhatan County. So gas gets us to the jobs and back. And when you start decrementing your budget with how much you have to spend on gas, food, and all the other necessities of life, then it becomes real. I've heard supervisors say, well, you know, pennies only, you know, such and such, you know, to the average families, only a hundred, two hundred dollars. That's a lot of money to senior citizens. It is to me. So anything that I can do this year, I'm going to do in terms of providing some relief. As I said in the workshop the other day, we've got something in the budget for schools. We've got something in the budget for the county. We need to have something in the budget for the taxpayers, the people we work for. And Mister Cox already brought up something that was right there in the budget that we haven't discussed. A one-point-four-million-dollar contingency fund. Now, I can tell you, when if I go, when we go through the school budget, and there's things in there that I'm not going to support. There's all kinds of opportunities to lower the rate. And that's what I want to do this year.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm through.
Mister Cox?
Yeah, I'd like to say something. I do know that everyone agreed last year to keep the tax rate the same. Y'all agreed on that. I wasn't part of that. But I would love to lower the tax rate. And I'll never say that I would never not want the rate lowered, the tax rate, but I'd be willing to look at it, to look at the numbers, to fine-tune the numbers and come to a better agreement.
Mister Cox?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I asked for was a discussion. Since we have a million-four of money, which is not dedicated to anything, just sitting in a contingent fund, has been no discussion by the members of this board. And so the decrease in tax rate is already in the budget. If we don't spend that money, it doesn't impact it. So I think it's worth the discussion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
One moment. Now it's my turn. That's what I try to do, give everybody an opportunity before it gets all around. All good points. I gotta, I it's a tough job, but we all ran because we want to sit up here. And we listen to you because we work for you. I watched the tax rate. I haven't voted for the budget the first year when it was, you know, the crystal ball was brought out and told, you know, you're going to only collect ninety-two percent of your taxes. I didn't buy that. I've lived in this county since nineteen-sixty-three. I asked the treasurer at that time, Ms. Barton, what's the worst tax collection rate we've ever had? Ninety-four. That was in two thousand eight or nine. We normally collect ninety-seven percent. It's amazing to me, the stories that get out there, but it is Powhatan County, and that's what happens, is stories, rumors, everybody knows this information and that information, and I'm not sure that's always true. What I do know is that this county runs on you, on your backs. The citizens of this county pay the revenue with real estate tax rate. The big cliche when we were running, it was ninety-two percent of the revenue comes from you, eight percent comes from the businesses. I think that's gotten worse. This board, in their vision statement, mission statement, we're going to improve that. It's hard to improve. You got to bring businesses into this county to improve that. We have a hard job to figure out, how do we get the money to do the things that to provide the services that you want, that you need, that you expect, that you should have? We have a budget exactly like you have a budget. We go, I agree with Mister Williams. We go to the store, we fill up the car with gas, or maybe we just put ten dollars in it, or maybe we put ten gallons in it, not thirty. I remember those days where, when you went to the gas station, you had to have the odd number on your license plate to get gas, or the even number to get gas, and you can only buy on those days according to your license tag. Well, here's the other side of the coin a little bit, because I do remember last year in seventy-nine cents, and I'll tell you now, I'm at seventy-nine cents. I don't play the game and hide it. I'm up front with you. I'll tell you exactly where I'm at. The seventy-nine cents is what we agreed to. It is a political football. You go down, everybody loves you, until the assessments come out. And when the assessments come out, now everybody's going to go, oh, my gosh, they raised taxes again. Well, we who sit up here, we control the tax rate. We do not control the assessments of your property. We don't do that. When you're paying your tax bill, you want that assessment to be low. When you're selling that house, you want that assessment to be high, because you want to be able to justify the price you want for your house. We are no different than you in terms of this county's budget. All the things that you go buy at the grocery store go up. You don't see me in the grocery store very much because my wife goes, and it takes me a little bit of time if I go, and everybody up here knows, if you go to grocery store- You don't see me in the grocery store very much because my wife goes, and it takes me a little bit of time if I go, and everybody up here knows, if you go to the grocery store, and I'm in there, it's going to be a long time before I get outside. Just don't go. The, uh, the cost of hiring people, is it down? Did it go down? I don't think so. It went up. Who's going to pay for that? You are. It's your money. I, I, there's just nothing about it that, that gets out of sync with that. It's your money. Ninety-two percent of the money that comes into this county, and quite frankly, I think it's more than that right now, but I haven't asked Mr. Smith recently. I think it's more than that, that you, you pay. We have to pay for everything that this county does, and it's not becoming less expensive to operate this county. It's costing more. Well, it's not coming from the ferry, I'll tell you that. It's coming from you all. We don't control the assessments. We do control the tax rate. Tax rate was at eighty-eight, it went to eighty-five, it went to seventy-nine last year. We have the lowest tax rate between Henrico, Chesterfield, Richmond, Hanover, and Goochlin is at fifty-three cents. But if they tell you the whole story, there's a Tuckahoe District in Goochlin that pays an additional thirty-five cents. So the tax rate in Goochlin exceeds eight to eighty, eighty-five cents at a month. There's one-point-four-million dollars. I got that tonight. We've had four, five workshops, had never come out to this point, not that I've heard of. The other day, which was last Tuesday, I made a motion in the budget workshop that we maintain our tax rate of seventy-nine cents. It passed three to two. Mistake. There was no resolution. Am I right, Mr. Latchey?
Need a resolution.
You need a resolution there to do that. Mistake. We're not perfect. But we have to run this county, and we have to provide services. And when you have your spouse, your child, your mother, your whoever, grandparent, and they're laying on the floor, and you got to wait twenty minutes for rescue to get there? Fortunately, that doesn't happen often around here, because we, we do have a great rescue unit, great fire department, great sheriff's office. We got a wonderful library. We got great schools. But you guys paid for that. You paid for that. And you continue to pay for it. Two years ago. This board created a revenue stabilization plan. Took a million dollars of money that was in a capital maintenance reserve fund from Palatine County Public Schools, and they agreed to allow that to come over so we could have a rainy day fund because the gross domestic product was going to be terrible for the next ten years, and, you know, the, the, the the financial markets were all in dire straits. We have to pay bills. We have to run this county. We have to provide services to you all. Where's the, the magic line that we can have a tax rate and assessments and expenditures that work? We agreed seventy-nine cents was a pretty good number. We hired a financial guru from Henrico County that had a hundred and sixty-five people working under him in finance. He made a model for us that projected out ten years of how we were going to run our county and operate and provide the services, the capital improvement projects that we wanted to do, and we were going to pay cash for them all. Predominantly, I think there's maybe six products or six projects that we would have to finance. We're on a pay-as-you-go basis. Me personally, I think that's pretty smart. But I only ran a business for like twenty-five years in this county. I'd like to know how much Mr. Williams wants to cut the tax rate.
I'll answer your question.
Great.
But first, I want to say something. Mr. Bailey, you know, you're a businessman. You then know that it's both how you plan, manage, and spend. We can talk about, you know, how things are more expensive to operate. Once again, we're a business, and we're a one-million-nine, hundred-and-nine-million-dollar business called Palatine County. So again, it comes down to three words, how you plan, manage, and spend in the world we live in. Now, this whole thing that came out about we're the cheapest in the region, and now we're, you're seeing a little bit of backtrack in here tonight. We were told Goochlin was higher than us because county administrator added in the Tuckahoe District, which is a special tax district. If you go out there and look at Weldon Cooper, at any other place where the advertised rates, they don't include the special tax districts. Now, I can cherry pick. If we want to say, you know, our neighbors, let's, let's look at them at you. Ask yourself what Cumberland's is. Airs is higher. If we go with Planning District fifteen, which we belong to, go and check the jurisdictions, and there's nine, in Planning District fif- fifteen called the Richmond Regional Plan District. Check Levano. I haven't checked Charles City, but that would be another likely one where we're going to be higher. So using a term that's getting thrown around, it seems like daily transparency. Let's be transparent with you. Let's don't cherry pick. So it's only now, after we concatenate the two discussions, do we get a full view of what's going on with the tax rates in the region. Now, one of the things that Mr. Bailey said, we only saw the hundred-and-four million tonight. Well, I can tell you, it was presented in the county budget, it was not highlighted, and the county administrator's executive summary, it was something Mr. Cox pulled on his own, I believe. Why didn't we discuss it? Why wasn't it told to us? And as Mr. Bailey said, we do have a rainy day fund, a contingency fund, something the state of Virginia has, something that other localities have that we didn't have when COVID hit. And I applaud the board for making that money available. It was the prudent thing to do. But this contingency fund that's in community development, not sure what it's going to be used for. It's not sitting out there as a special pot of money. It's in community development. In terms of the tax rate this year, I'm in support of a minimum of seventy-seven cents. But I don't know, after we have further discussion, as Mr. Cox has suggested, I might be able to go lower.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Ms. Carmack?
You had mentioned, um, Mr. Williams, the other day, you know, a three-hundred-dollar tax relief for citizens. And I just want to bring some perspective to what that would look like. If your house is assessed at three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, at a seventy-nine-cent tax rate, you would be paying two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars. At a seventy-seven cents ta- cent tax rate, you'd be paying twenty-six ninety-five. That's a seventy-dollar difference. Five-hundred-thousand dollars, seventy-nine versus seventy-seven, you'd be looking at a hundred-dollar difference. Two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, seventy-nine versus seventy-seven, you'd be looking at a fifty-dollar difference per household. Uh, that's nowhere even touches the, and, and that's all money. I mean, fifty dollars is a lot to people, a hundred dollars, seventy dollars, that is, that's something to every citizen. I, I understand that. Mr. Smith, can you put up your, um, your graph showing the seventy-seven versus seventy-nine cent?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you explain that as well?
Sure. Uh, if you could go to the next page, Holly.
So give you the modeling that we looked at.
This is basically with the initiatives that the board supervisors has discussed numerous, numerous times. How, how would seventy-seven cents in the, in the orange line play out? Uh, and you can see by the second, by two thousand twenty-five, we would drop below our revenue stabilization reserve fund, and it continue on a downward path below our minimum fund balance level in two thousand thirty.
Excuse me, can we make that graph any larger? I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, this is the scenario that Mr. Cox asked for a couple of weeks ago. And it shows the, this, the red line, it basically shows our projected fund balance, and when we get in trouble as far as our cash flow balances based on if the plan that the board supervisors worked on to date.
Can you explain what the fund balance di- is and what it does to the citizens?
If it protects the citizens, to make sure the county has enough money in a downturn, that we could react in a recession standpoint. We be, we've always had the fifty, the blue line you see on the screen, which is our adopted fifteen percent policy. Two years ago, the board, in its wisdom, added an extra three percent cushion, which you see on the gray line. That's the revenue stabilization reserve fund that we, you heard mentioned earlier. And so our, our modeling is basically designed as what tax rate will keep us safe and sound with cash flow basis and still take care of the capital needs that the county needs. And we've talked about school buses, school improvements, sheriff's vehicles, a lot of key essential items are in our capital budget. And the, you know, so apples to apples, if, if I'm, as I told, if you don't mind rolling back to the other page, at seventy-nine cents, you'll see the vision right now that the boards are working on to date uh, with, you know, without the, at a seventy-nine cent tax rate. I hope that helps.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Carmack. Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Um, Ms. Smith, could we put the seventy-seven cents back up?
Yes, sir.
Now, this is the hocus pocus about all of this, and the reason we need to have some discussions. Seventy-seven cents looked bad because all they did was take out revenue. Okay, of course, it looked worse. Now, if you take the million four for this year out of the expenses, because you're giving it back to you, you're not spending it in some amorphous contingency fund, this graph begins to change very dramatically. That's the reason we need to have more discussion, Mr. Smith. You can't simply take out revenue.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Smith.
I really wish that, and I know the board met numerous times on this topic, and as recently as last week, adopted a component part of our budget, which, which was our healthcare component last week. The board voted five-zero to approve the healthcare so that our employees would not be impacted with healthcare. That is part of the ma- the million fours. The items you're seeing there are all like the million four in contingencies, are all items that you have discussed as a board of supervisors, and simply being parked there until we, until you give us your final approval, and then we will spread it to the other departments. There's no way we would ever have a million four in contingencies in our budget, Mr. Cox.
Mr. Mr. Smith, that's what it shows on your budget, okay? That is the reason why I asked to have more discussion, not to make a definitive answer.
You've already voted on it, Mr. Cox. You voted for half of it already, so.
We have not voted on the budget, Mr. Smith. Okay, the budget still has to be discussed and voted on. We've had two lousy, small meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Cox.
That's for sure.
Now, thank you, Mr. Cox.
I have the motion on the floor.
Uh, Mr. Cox?
Mr. Bailey, I'll be finished.
You're out of order, so stop now.
Okay, out of order requires a, a vote, does it not, Mr. Lachey?
No, I mean, it, you still have
Throw me out of order.
Right, out of order, technically, it, it would require, if, first, you'd ask a parliamentarian. I technically think he still has the floor and can continue as long as he has the floor, unless there's a motion to end debate, which would take a two-thirds vote.
And I'm fine with you continuing, as Mr. Williams is over here saying, Mr. Bailey, too. One at a time, okay?
Just let me, just let me finish.
If you stop interrupting me, I will let you speak, okay?
I had not stopped when I was talking.
Go ahead.
This would have been a lot quicker if you hadn't interrupted or started talking again. What I want to have is a discussion. We have some interesting information. We have not adopted a budget. We've had not the kind of discussion on the budget. We haven't even talked about the school budget. And so, uh, we have a lot of things to talk about, but here, here sits, uh, we haven't adopted anything, Mr. Smith.
Yes, sir, you did. You did approve it.
Please, I, I have the floor.
Thank you.
You will go through the chair, right?
He will.
Thank you. Okay, I'm finished.
You sure?
Yep.
Good. Mr. Bailey, so, yes, Mr. Williams.
Thomas, a question for you. I think Mr. Bailey had the correct answer. He said, you know, we didn't have the public hearing when we voted last time, and I'm guilty, you know, I, I missed it. Okay, we made a mistake. But we should have had the public hearing. I assumed that we were taking that straw vote so the staff would be able to prepare for tonight and know what resolution to prepare. We've done that in the past. So tonight, when the public, uh, we had the public hearing, and now we're taking a roll call vote, are we adopting the rate tonight, or did we adopt it in the workshop? That's my question.
Well, there's no public hearing requirement unless you raise the rate, so there wasn't a public hearing, just adoption. The, the reason it would, needs to be voted on tonight is because the Virginia Constitution mentions it being done by ordinance or resolution. So the budget meeting was an oral vote to set the resolution amount, and then tonight, the formal resolution is before the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir, Mr. Williams. One-point-four-million dollars contingency fund. Mr. Smith, we voted last Tuesday to take four-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars towards, to pay for the healthcare, of which the county had a nineteen percent increase in healthcare this year. That would be four-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars. We did vote with a five-O vote to pay that. Am I right, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
So out of the one-point-four-million contingency fund, that money is going to be paid from that account. Am I right, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we have a basically nine-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, whatever the number is, left. At that point, what is those funds? What, what is your thoughts of what those funds are earmarked for?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We, we had in-depth discussions with the sheriff and the rest of the staff a- as a board to understand the impact of compression on our salary and our, and our ability to recruit and compete in the market. Approximately four-hundred-thousand of that money, as, as you, as the board has seen, is the, the design to address compression, and especially in public safety, is, it, was our starting point and focus. So that's the second piece of that puzzle. The third piece is the cost of living raise that the board has not approved. We had to put it in the budget somewhere, and basically, we chose to commit this spot to put it. And that's all the things that we've went over with the board on, throughout our discussions over the last month.
Yeah, we have had a few meetings. The one-point-four-million minus the healthcare, four-sixty-five, minus the compression pay for the sheriff's department.
It's compression for every, for all.
For the entire, everybody in the county. It's not limited to sheriff's department. I know that was instrumental in helping them. And then the cost of living raise that we're having, how much is that roughly?
That would be the difference for, uh, eight-sixty-five plus about uh, for, for general government, Ms. Ms. Schumer, do you remember, was it a about a four, I, I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman, it's about, it's got to be the difference, probably the four-hundred-thousand dollars. Those, but we had to put that in order to show it to you in a total, so the bu- budget would balance. We had to put it somewhere until you told us how to allocate, you know, what, what you were going to do.
So we have to vote to tell you where to put those funds. We voted to tell you where to put the healthcare, correct?
Yes, sir.
Have we voted to, to, we haven't approved the budget yet, so we haven't told you to do the four-hundred-thousand Have we voted to, to, we haven't approved the budget yet, so we haven't told you to do the four hundred thousand for the compression back.
Yeah. And once you did, we would allocate away from community development to whoever it ends up being.
Right.
For example, the sheriff's budget.
Right, so you put it in the contingency fund line item.
Yes, sir.
So that it can sit there, sit there. Until the board makes a decision on how it's going to appropriate those funds. Does that sound right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yep. The, uh, let's have a roll call vote on Mr. Cox's motion. You want to repeat that, Mr. Cox?
Yes, sir, Mr. Byerly. It's a motion to defer our twenty twenty-two dash ten. Until our regular April meeting to give the board an opportunity to explore a real estate tax decrease. So a positive vote would be to support this, a negative vote would be to defeat it.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask one thing for clarification?
Sure.
April first or April, when you say a regular April meeting, what, what?
Which is the twenty, this is the third week in April, is it not?
Correct, but we have to have it out for advertisement by April first.
Only if we want to change it for June.
Yeah, but if we change it, she needs it in order to mail it out. I, I think technically we have to have it done by April first. We can't wait till April twenty-eighth.
Why not?
They have to go, be mailed, remember? She said she needs two weeks to process, two weeks to, um. Little help here, guys. She's needed two weeks to process it, two weeks to ensure it, you know, with the new system to work out any glitches.
We went, we went through that.
Yeah.
And it, you know, it's pretty easy to go to the meeting. I can tell you, it was last week's meeting. It was at the one hour and fifty-nine minute mark, and I'll quote you. I make a motion to keep the tax rate at seventy-nine cents for this year. That was my motion. That's my quote. And it's in that meeting at the one hour and fifty-nine minute mark. It was seconded by Ms. Carmack. Which is all irrelevant. We're, what we're going to do is Mr. Cox has put a motion on the floor. I, I know I'm at the seventy-nine cents. I think that's how we should operate. And then once we do our budget settlement, if this board would like to issue a refund to the taxpayers. This, the majority of this board can do that. That's not a problem. Because it's a budget number. Uh, but the tax rate. Is what we set. If we're going to issue a refund, that's a different story. So let's have our roll call vote.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, can we make sure we understand which way a yay vote and a nay vote is?
A motion to defer to the regular April meeting, yes means defer this decision, no means don't defer.
Thank you.
We do need to mail it by the.
The tax bills will be late.
And I say, one, Mr. Chair, I'm not going to lower the tax rate and cut our public services. And what we've already agreed, I'm not going to do that.
Okay, let's just do the roll.
You, are you? I'm not cutting public services. I'm not cutting sheriff's office or our public services at all.
Yes, sir. Okay, are, are you, are you ready?
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Chairman, could we clarify something?
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Miss, answer Mrs. Carmack's question a little bit better, okay? The April first is if you're going to reduce the tax rate, okay? If we discuss this, then we will not be able to reduce the tax rate in June, but we would be able to in, uh, November. Okay, so it doesn't, doesn't have to affect the tax bill, but because we have waited so late in this process, we cannot get the June going. I understand that.
Okay, let's have our roll call vote.
Mr. Williams.
Hi.
Mr. McClung.
No.
Mr. Cox.
I.
Ms. Carmack.
No.
Mr. Byerly.
No.
I made so many notes, I lost what page I was on.
We gotta go back, we still gotta do the regular motion.
Yep, I got it. Okay, I'm going to make the motion that we, like I did the other day. I'll make the motion, we maintain our tax rate at seventy-nine cents for this year. I need a second.
I'll second that.
So the motion is to adopt the resolution as in the packing.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
I'd like to introduce a substitute motion. The substitute motion is a tax rate of seventy-seven cents.
Do you have a second for that?
Second.
So, Mr. Latchney, with the substitute motion, we've got to vote on that.
You vote on that first, whether the resolution, you're taking them seventy-nine cents out and plugging seventy-seven cents into the resolution.
Right, so.
You have to vote on that first, and you can do it all in favor there because it's not the actual resolution.
Right, so it would be the, uh, taking the seventy-nine cents out and replacing it with seventy-seven cents.
Correct.
And we don't need to do a roll call. All in favor of seventy-seven cents, say aye.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to go back to Mr. Lachney's last comment. On this, you don't need a roll call?
No, because you're not actually voting on the actual resolution. You're only voting on whether that number inside the resolution be seventy-seven or seventy-nine.
Okay.
It's gonna take another vote, even if the seventy-seven prevails, it'll take a second.
That, that's why I wanted your clarification. Thank you.
We do a roll call for clarity.
You can if you want.
Okay, we'll do a roll call on the seventy-seven cent number.
Mr. Williams.
Hi.
Mr. McClung.
No.
Ms. Cox.
I.
Ms. Carmack.
No.
Mr. Byerly.
No.
Now we go back to the original motion. And that is. To maintain the current tax rate, seventy-nine cents this year. In the, let's just do it this way. Let me rephrase it here. Move to approve resolution R twenty twenty-two dash ten as presented.
I'll second that.
A roll call, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Williams.
No.
Mr. McClung.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
No.
Ms. Carmack.
Aye.
Mr. Byerly.
Aye.
Motion passed three to two. Tax rate will be seventy-nine cents. Next, we go to. Uh, the substantial accord appeal. With Bell Dale Solar. Come on up.
Okay, can y'all hear me? Okay?
Sure.
Okay, um, good evening, Mr. Chair and supervisors. My name is Drew Price with Hexagon Energy in Charlottesville, and I'm here tonight. On behalf of Bell Dale Solar. And, uh, tonight's hearing, as you heard earlier, people clarify, is solely focused on our appeal of the substantial accord determination at the planning commission. So tonight is not about the conditional use permit or the conditions, as some of the previous public commoners have alluded to. I hope to be able to talk with y'all at a future date about that conditional use permit and the conditions that we have developed. In conjunction with county and neighbors to provide economic benefits and protect the land. But tonight's really just about the comprehensive plan. And the rural areas section of the Powhatan comprehensive plan specifically envisions solar as a use in the rural areas. Similarly, the Powhatan zoning ordinance, which works hand in hand with the comprehensive plan. Allows solar as a conditional use in the A-ten district. So. As I plan to share tonight, the solar project is substantially in accord with the comprehensive plan. And we respectfully ask that the board overrule the planning commission's determination. I know y'all have a full agenda tonight, and I'll try and be brief, but given that this is the first time discussing this project with y'all, I want to give you enough context to. Show how we meet the, the comprehensive plan. And so, starting with location. As you saw from your planning staff, they did analysis last October. There are a limited number of locations in Powhatan County that are viable for solar projects. So this is obviously an outline of the county. Those are the major power lines that run through the county and the blue dots are substations. Solar projects need to be close to power lines or substations. When you add in the buildings in Powhatan County and zones where solar is not an allowed use under ordinance. You see that a lot of areas, especially the areas near sixty, um, are no longer viable. They're, they're out of bounds. When you add in the natural conservation, then you see that further, many of the areas near power lines are no longer viable. And what you're left with is small areas near the power lines that are open and suitable for a solar project. And not surprisingly, this is where the solar projects that you've approved have been located. And similarly, that's where Bell Dale is located, in an area outside of the protected zones, outside of priority conservation. In a zone where it's allowed and adjacent to a power line. It's important to note that this project, unlike the first project that was presented before you years ago, which I wasn't involved with. Is not at all in the priority conservation area. So you can see there an outline of the parcel. The substantial amount of the parcel does fall within the priority conservation area, but the project is not in that area. So the corridors that run north to south that Powhatan is designed and designated as priority conservation remain uninterrupted. And up near the project, those quarters are three point three miles wide across there. This project would be capped at three hundred and fifty acres. That's far less than the five hundred acres suggested in the comprehensive plan. And it's less than the actual combined size of what was approved for Scott Solar one and two. And it's important to note that all of these projects that have been approved in the county have been located in the rural areas. On the parcel itself, the parcel is nearly three thousand acres. It's one, if not the largest parcel that you have left in the county. And the project would use about ten percent of that for the solar project, leaving the other ninety percent. In a undisturbed state, so that includes wetlands, riparian buffers, which I'll touch on more, and perimeter buffers. That those combined represent forty percent. So using ten percent of the land, protecting forty percent of the land, keeping the remaining fifty percent in timber. So as folks have alluded to earlier, there is an entire section on the rural areas. Um, of which, yeah, it starts out on page sixty-nine of your comprehensive plan. And it mentions things like thriving farms, wooded and forested areas, and silver culture, which are all things that this project supports continuing on this land. In particular, in terms of thriving farms, you've all received a letter from the landowner, Mr. Purcell, that talks about what it's like to be an independent timber owner. In the world of modern conglomerate timber businesses. And the fact of the matter is, like a lot of you know, you have to have a mix of income streams to survive as an independent farmer. So this is actually enabling timber farming to continue on this property. Again, ninety percent of the property will be wooded or managed forest areas. The silver culture will be about half of the property, and the big reason for that is that. Four hundred and fifty acres that have been historically timbered have now been committed through a condition. For additional buffers around the riparian areas. So. Four hundred and fifty acres formerly timbered now will no longer be timbered to protect the watersheds that run through that property. This project is specifically permitted, as it stated on page seventy-six, only three hundred and fifty acres will be used. And again, none of it is in the priority conservation area. The comp plan goes on to, on page seventy-six, state that with certain conditions, solar energy farms may be appropriate. Within rural areas. It further goes on to say, to help ensure compatibility with surrounding rural landscapes and uses. The following features should be considered when citing and designing solar energy farms. And then it lists six features that it suggests that people looking to cite a solar energy farm in the county do to make it fit. Those are listed here. I'm going to go through them in detail in the next slides. But this project was specifically designed and redesigned, not only to meet all of those, but to exceed them. We're not asking for any variances from any of this stuff. We meet all those. So the first one, proximity to major thoroughfares. That up there is the major thoroughfare plan from the comprehensive plan. The red star is where this project is located. It is adjacent to a major thoroughfare on the map. And it will use major thoroughfares for construction traffic. As you know, and as some of the previous public commoners mentioned, a construction management plan has to be developed and approved by VDOT and the county. Screening and buffering. This project features buffers around the perimeter ranging from two hundred to seven hundred feet. And those consist of mature pines, five years of emerging growth. And new pines that are being planted as we speak, they're out there this week at five hundred and forty-two pines per acre. It's extremely dense. Um, along Carter'sville Road and Duke Road, based on feedback from neighbors, we have widened the buffers in areas to ensure that panels won't be seen. And we've agreed to a taller fence with an opaque screen to ensure that even in the dead of winter, which is these pictures, you can't see it in summer. With all the leaves, you don't even see into the property. Protection of natural resources. As I mentioned, the planning, uh, the comp plan suggests two hundred foot minimum buffer. That exists not only for the project area, but also voluntarily for the entire parcel, the entire three thousand acre parcel. The landowner has voluntarily agreed to a two hundred foot buffer around all those wetlands at the request of Dr. Riley. And then pollinators will be planted under the panels in those panel areas, which is actually going to improve water quality and provide a more diverse habitat. Than monoculture pines. It's important here to note that solar projects, both in the state and in this county, are subject to requirements to help protect natural resources that agriculture and timber don't have to meet. So if you'll see there on the left, you know, timber and agriculture has no required road buffer, no required property line buffer. Uh, a fifty-foot riparian buffer, which is best practices, no stormwater requirements, as you've heard tonight. The timbering can sometimes lead to issues in streams, no traffic requirements, no additional county restrictions on herbicide or pesticide use, and no requirements around biodiversity. By contrast, on the right are all the requirements that solar farms must meet in this county. Through the wisdom that y'all have done, as you've learned and improved these projects and through the state. So it has to have a stormwater plan. It has to have stormwater management in place, has to have a construction plan. Protection of cultural resources. We've had a phase one A cultural historical survey of the site area. There are no cultural resources within the site area. And the project is not visible from any historic site. And then finally, project size. Again, the project will be less than three hundred and fifty acres. But on top of that, and again, response to comments from, in fact, to the folks who spoke with you tonight. Ms. Wood and, and Ms. Adcock, we've agreed to a voluntary condition that prohibits any additional solar energy on this property. The entire three thousand acres for the life of the project. It would be it. This project, if approved, would be it. So again, this section of the Virginia code that we're talking about tonight is called twenty-two thirty-two. It says substantially in accord with the adopted comprehensive plan. Or part thereof. And consistency with the comprehensive plan is determined by whether our proposed plan meets the requirements that are in your comprehensive plan. And those are set forth again in that land use and community character chapter under rural lands. Again, it states, with certain conditions, solar energy farms may be appropriate within rural areas. And it says, to help ensure their compatibility with surrounding rural landscapes. The comprehensive plan, which was adopted in twenty nineteen and again approved in twenty twenty-one, clearly envisioned solar in rural areas. And we fully, let alone substantially, meet the conditions and considerations. And so we'd ask that the board overrule the determination and provide an opportunity for us, as people have indicated before, for our. Application to be heard at the planning commission. Um, I now want to hand it over briefly to our attorney, Karen Carmack, or sorry, Karen Cohen. To, um, to tell you just a little bit about the basis of tonight's decision, because again, I think it's important that it not get confused with the conditional use permit, which we hope to discuss in the future. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I am Karen Cohen. I'm a partner with Gentry Lock in Richmond, and I represent the applicant who's the petitioner in this appeal. So Drew and I talked about who should go first and decided it was best to start with, with Drew to give you some context to the legal part. Um, and while Drew's presentation, I think, is quite compelling. And while Drew's presentation, I think, is quite compelling standing alone, I do want to briefly touch on the law because there are important legal parameters that guide consideration of the issue before you. First, as Drew said, this is an appeal pursuant to Part B of Section fifteen point two dash twenty-two thirty-two of the state code. And this is the part of the statute that permits an applicant to come to you and ask the board to overrule the planning commission's substantial accord determination. And as, as you said earlier, Mr. Chairman, no other matter relating to the Beldale Solar Project is before the board tonight. Our only request is that the board overrule the planning commission's SIA determination. And I say SIA because it gets, it's substantial, the exact language from the code is substantially in accord. So we often refer to it as SIA because it gets unwieldy to keep saying substantially in accord. So we say SIA so we don't have to say all those words. But those words are important because they derive from Part A of Section fifteen point two dash twenty-two thirty-two. And I think it's important, especially for the public, to understand what that statute really says and what it doesn't say. So twenty-two thirty-two review or SIA review, which is done by the planning commission, is sometimes called a public facilities review. And you know, that's because, as you know, it doesn't happen for every development project. It happens for public facilities. And in Virginia, solar projects have to go through this twenty-two thirty-two public facilities review because they're providing electricity, which is a public utility, and the statute refers to public utility facilities. But just for context, other facilities, other public facilities have to go through SIA twenty-two thirty-two review, like a public school, for example, would have to go through that process. If, and this is really, this is the key thing about the scheme of this statute, that it is admittedly hard to grasp because all of twenty-two thirty-two A is just a big, long run-on sentence of legalese. So it's, it's pretty rough. But the scheme of Part A is that if a public facility is already shown on the comprehensive plan, then it doesn't need to go through a planning commission twenty-two thirty-two review. So for example, if part of the comp plan said, Public High School Number Ten, or whatever it is called, is going to be located here, and it was shown on a map or otherwise described in the comprehensive plan, you wouldn't need to have a twenty-two thirty-two review for that public high school. But then what twenty-two thirty-two A goes on to say is, if it's not shown as a feature, and that's the word that's used, if it's not shown as a feature on your comprehensive plan, then you need to have it submitted to the planning commission. And what the applicant, and it could be the county, needs to submit to the planning commission is, quote, "the general location or approximate location, character, and extent of what's being proposed." So if it was a public school, you'd have to say about where it's approximately where it's going to be located. As to character and extent, is it a high school, an elementary school? How big will it be? These are the things that come at this stage of the review. And so it needs to be enough information about the project to meet these general requirements of location, its character, and extent being submitted for review. Not every specific detail of the project, because remember, the twenty-two thirty-two is not the land use case. The land use case is still to come. All that happens at this stage for the planning commission is to determine whether this type of project is, and again, quote, "substantially in accord with the comprehensive plan", which, you know, substantially in accord does not need to be wholly in accord with the entirety of the comprehensive plan because the statute says that the proposed public facility only needs to be substantially in accord with the comprehensive plan or a part thereof. So that's the key language from twenty-two thirty-two A. So I apologize if it's different giving a legal lecture, but I think it's, it's important to go through all that because I wanted it to be clear to the public to to understand that the board is not approving or disapproving the proposed Beldale Solar Project tonight. The board will make that land use decision on the application later. And, you know, how do we know this? It's not just me saying this. We know this because this is what the Supreme Court of Virginia has said, and the Attorney General of Virginia have said, and I'm quoting, "A comprehensive plan generally does not by itself act as an instrument of land use control. Rather, the plan serves as a guideline for the development and implementation of a zoning ordinance." And we know that Powhatan County understands this quite well because it says the very same thing in its zoning ordinance. In the zoning ordinance that you've adopted, it expressly states the zoning ordinance, and I'm quoting again, "is for the purpose of, among other things, implementing the Powhatan County Comprehensive Plan." That's in your zoning ordinance at Section eighty-three dash one oh two. And we know this is the case for solar. And how do we know? Because again, the board adopted a zoning ordinance implementing the comprehensive plan by permitting solar energy facilities in an area that is, and again, I'm quoting from your ordinance, "agrarian and low-density rural character." That's in your zoning ordinance at Section eighty-three dash one sixty-two, where solar energy facilities are allowed as a conditional use in the A-ten district. So, and by the way, just to address a comment that came up earlier, so there's no confusion, and and your attorney can tell you this too. But there was a comment about the state code referring to special exceptions and that, and this is a conditional use permit. The state code only refers to special exceptions, and the various localities have different types of special exceptions. They can be SOPs, CUPS, or SPs, or SEs. So as special use permit, conditional use permit, special exception, special permit, it's kind of the alphabet soup of land use law, unfortunately. But the state code only refers to special exceptions, but a cup, a conditional use permit, it is a type of special exception. So I just wanted to clarify that. So there's a clear basis for overruling the the SIA determination, a clear legal basis. But finally, I just want to conclude by talking through a little bit, what is the practical effect? If the board overrules the SIA, then the planning commission will have a chance to consider the merits of the conditional use permit. And the board will have the further opportunity to address the issue of comprehensive plan conformity in a couple of ways. I mean, first of all, again, your zoning ordinance requires that for you to issue a conditional use permit, you must find that the conditional use permit, again, I'm quoting, is consistent with the purposes, goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. That's at eighty-three dash one twenty-three of your zoning ordinance. And if the board were to approve a solar sighting agreement, which is permissible under state legislation, then the project is deemed, quote, "to be substantially in accord with the comprehensive plan of the host locality, thereby satisfying the requirements of fifteen point two dash twenty-two thirty-two." And that is in the state code at fifteen point two dash twenty-three sixteen point nine. So if you act favorably on our petition for appeal tonight, the outcome will be one that not only accords with the law and with due respect for the landowner's right to a lawful process, but also is in the public interest because it would allow the process to continue. The applicant can further address issues and concerns of citizens in the planning commission, like some of the, some of the things that were brought up tonight. There was, for example, one of the citizens read some conditions from another project and suggested that those be considered for this conditional use permit application. So the planning commission would then provide a substantive and meaningful recommendation on the conditional use permit to the board, giving citizens, staff, the applicant, the commission, the best opportunity to continue to work on conditions and to address any concerns so that the project not only meets this initial threshold of substantial accord, which it clearly does, but comes to the board as the best possible project it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carmack, this is in your district.
I'll make a motion, sir.
Before we do that, could I ask a process question?
If it's a process question, yes.
You may. Thank you.
I'm confused, Mr. Lackney. And help me. In February twenty-five, two thousand and nineteen, we had the same situation, actually with the predecessor of this, and we held public hearings on both the determination, planning commission determination, and as well as the project itself. We had, we had public hearing scheduled for that. We had public hearing scheduled on November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty for the Three Bridge, where we looked at whether it was in substantial accord with the public, with with the comprehensive plan. So in both of those, in the past, we've had public hearings on this. And in fact, it appears that the applicant asked that they requested a public hearing be scheduled on the appeal. So help me understand why we didn't advertise this and have, because it's different from what we've done in the past.
Well, state law, technically, the fifteen twenty-two thirty-two, the council kept referring to, it doesn't say that if on the appeal, there needs to be a second public hearing. There's nothing in state code that requires it. We may have done it, and I don't recall the specifics on those previous instances because they were a while back. But state law does not mandate a public hearing. There would be, if if the board override, overrules the planning commission, there would still be a public hearing on the CUP, which has not occurred yet. And so I'm not sure how those others played out, what the difference was, or, okay, I don't remember that.
Could, could you tell me, once again, process, if, what happens if we agree with the planning commission, and what happens if we disagree with the planner? What, 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 what happens?
Well, what, what state law and his counsel was pointing out, as state laws, what state law says is, you cannot authorize this development if it's not in substantial accord with the comp plan. If no twenty-two thirty-two substantial court finding is made. That's why at the planning commission, when they said, we, three to two, we don't believe it's a substantial accord. We didn't even get to their CUP request because it was my opinion, the planning commission couldn't authorize it when, in fact, it had been determined that it wasn't in substantial accord. So if the board upholds that, then, then in my view, the matter is, is done because no substantial accord was found, and the CUP never gets heard. If the board reverses the planning commission, then the CUP would go back on the agenda. And whatever happens to the planning commission, the CUP would then come here, and and there would be public hearings in both places.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Supervisors overturns the planning commission's finding in Case two one zero nine CUP, Beldair Solar is found to be in compliance with the comprehensive plan.
I'll second that. Comments, discussion, questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I have been to this property. I have met with residents. I've met with my constituents. I've met with the developer. I've met with the landowner. I've walked the property myself. I don't know if my other colleagues have or not, but I've actually walked the property. I'm torn between this because the, I believe in the, the owner's rights, that he has to do what he wants with this property. And I believe that the developer of the solar has met and looked at. He's tried to listen to the residents and to apply what they have requested, and I think they have met that. So I will, I would like, I would probably, I am gonna let it go back to the planning commission for review. After I've seen with my eyes and my, and I've been out there, I know what, I can envision what will be out there. So I'm gonna let the planning commission review it again. I did like what Ms. Brown said earlier about different agriculture aspects we could, to we could add to the project. And I'm sure that the developer and landowner would agree to some conditions. So that's it.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make one quick comment on why I feel that it is in accord with the comprehensive plan. Like I said, we said earlier tonight, the only thing we're discussing is it basically going back to the planning commission to be heard as a conditional use permit. Our most recent comprehensive plan, we spoke, we spent close to a year going through that page by page. It has a page dedicated to solar guidelines in the Rural Preservation Section in the Land Use and Community Character Chapter. As the applicant said, per our zoning ordinance, the only area that a solar farm is permitted is in, by a CUP in A-ten. We've approved four solar farms. Out of those four, two are but priority conservation areas. All three are adjacent to protected lands, and one borders a recreational lake. The planning commission recently revisited solar farms, yet no changes were made in our comprehensive plan or zoning ordinance. But what probably is the most concerning to me in this case actually involves the applicant. Drew Price first approached the county in November of two thousand and twenty. He had a pre-application meeting in June of two thousand and twenty-one. Subsequently, he's had upwards of close to forty meetings. He had sixteen neighborhood meetings, two community meetings, six staff meetings, eight planning commissioner meetings, four supervisor meetings, plus phone calls, conference calls, and emails. And in that time period, no one told him that he wasn't in accord with the comprehensive plan. He may not even be heard. The section for solar energy farms, the infamous page seventy-six, says, "Since these facilities require large open areas to operate, they will likely locate outside the designated growth areas. With certain conditions, solar energy farms may be appropriate within rural areas." So we're not even going to let him present his conditions? I just look at the hours upon hours of work and probably the tens of thousands of dollars at this point that this applicant and land, landowner have put towards this project. And we don't have the respect to even allow him to present his case? I'm a business owner, and I can say that if I went to a company and presented something, and they said, yeah, you know, let's proceed, and I went to them upwards of forty times and spent tens of thousands of dollars on a prototype, and I got to the board of directors and they wouldn't even hear me, that wouldn't put a very good taste in my mouth. We often wonder why Powhatan has a, a negative image or an image that we're trying to reverse in the business community or just in the development community in general. That's probably why. So I think we owe this applicant a seat at the table to at least present his case. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir, Mr. Cox. Interesting comment about respect and what we owe the applicant. The applicant has come before us before. Same situation, and we've rejected them. Didn't hear the case. We've done that with the second Cypress Creek. So it's not a question of respect. These are business people. They are, they understand the difficulties of getting these projects cited. So I don't feel sorry, but I'm not worried about that. What I am interested in is Mrs. Adcock and the hundred-plus citizens that are in your district, Mrs. Carmack, who do not want this project, who do not feel like it represents maintaining the rural character of Powhatan. That's what I'm interested in, is maintaining the rural character of Powhatan and a industrial-grade electrical manufacturing and storage facility, and that's what it is. It's not a solar farm. Industrial-grade electrical manufacturing and storage facility visible from the highways. Don't shake your heads because it is. So if you look at the grade, you can't keep it from being seen. So I'm sorry, I take a different tact than Mrs. Carmack. It's not unusual for us to disagree. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure. Okay, let's, no. Let's, um, we've, we've, we're here. Let's take our vote. And we don't need to do a roll call vote with this, do we?
I wouldn't hurt.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote.
Mr. Williams.
What, what, what are we voting on?
Ms. Carmack made a motion to approve, to revoke.
Miss Carmack made a motion to approve to reverse.
There's a motion.
Yeah, Miss Carmack made a motion.
There's been a second to that motion. It was only like ten minutes ago. I understand, but I want to know what the yay and nay votes mean. That's all.
Oh. Yay reverses the planning commission, nay upholds the planning commission.
Forty-one in the book.
You want to vote nay?
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Smith, a roll call vote. Mr. Williams. Oh, Mr. McClung.
Yay.
Mr. Cox.
No.
Ms. Carmack.
Yay.
Mr. Barley.
Yay.
Thank you, Mrs. Carmack, for the primary. All right.
Just keep it easy.
Public hearings.
Mr. Barley, before we launch in that, could we take a little break?
Sure. That is a good idea because we got five or six to go. Five-minute break.
This should go quick.
Going to go to public hearings ordinance zero two zero two two dash twelve, amending the Powhatan County Code of Ordinances to amend the provisions of chapter seventy, article two, exemptions for elderly and handicap. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This public hearing zero twenty-two twenty-two dash twelve, if approved, will facilitate an increase in the real estate tax exemption afforded to qualifying elderly and handicap taxpayers, doubling the maximum exemption from eight hundred dollars to sixteen hundred dollars.
Mr. Chair.
Do we have? Yes, Mr. McClung.
I'd like to make a motion.
Let's have our public hearing first, okay? Let's hold on one second. We'll have that public hearing.
Okay.
Does anyone from the public want to speak on this topic? Anyone on Zoom? Zoom is clear. Not seeing anyone coming down. No one on Zoom. Go ahead, Mr. McClung.
I'd like to make a motion to move to approve ordinance zero dash two oh two dash twelve as presented.
Roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Discussion.
Discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Cox.
Mrs. Smith, what's the cost of this? We should know what we're what we're what we're obligating. I like I like what we're doing, but what's it going to cost us?
Two hundred thousand.
Additional?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's now in a budget is seven hundred, shown as the proposed budget is showing as seven hundred and twenty-five thousand. From five fifty, just okay?
And that includes other exemptions. This is part of the a total, a larger total.
Okay, so that's approaching two cents.
Yes, but
Yes, okay, that's
It's not all for that purpose, the seven twenty-five.
No, no, but the exemptions, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. The exemptions are what we have is we're doubling the tax credit on the elderly and for the veterans to go from eight hundred dollars credit on real estate taxes to sixteen hundred dollars for the elderly. And I think the criteria is about fifty thousand dollars of income. Yes, sir, fifty thousand dollars in income as a, it must be less than fifty thousand dollars in income, net worth exclusive of the home site and an acre of two hundred thousand dollars. Right. So Mr. McClung has made a motion.
I'll second.
Go ahead, Ms. Carmack.
Second it.
Roll call vote, Mr. Smith. Mr. Williams.
Hi.
Mr. McClung.
Hi.
Mr. Cox.
Hi.
Ms. Carmack.
Hi.
Mr. Barley.
Hi.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda, zero two zero two two eleven, case twenty-two oh two AZ, Powhatan. Go ahead, Mr. Smith. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ordinance zero twenty-two twenty twenty-two dash eleven, case twenty-two dash zero two AZ, requests amendment of section sixty-eight, article three, concerning access management standards and requires a public hearing. Mr. Hopkins is here to up to update us on the ordinance. Mr. Hopkins?
Let's see if that works. We're placing it with VDOT standards. We have, we currently have access management standards in particular to Powhatan County. In our research, we found that the majority of counties in the Commonwealth do not use their own standards, like what we found was Goochland. But in an evaluation of our own, we focused on the growth areas along sixty, which usually is when a lot of applications come in. We found that basically two hundred and sixty-five parcels in the growth area of the ones that couldn't meet Powhatan standards is two hundred and thirty-three, and with VDOT standards is two thirteen. So really, we're only talking about twenty parcels. Basically, the rules as constituted are kind of controlling for the exception and not the rules, what I would say is kind of a lay term of it. In the past five years, seventy-seven percent of applications have come through have needed a waiver. So basically, most applications that come here, we we need access management waivers for. And if you broke it down by mile, the difference of six hundred and twenty-five feet versus four hundred and ninety-five or four hundred and twenty-five, no, four ninety-five feet versus six twenty-five feet are basically just between these standards. In a mile basis, without counting for the individual parcels, is ten versus eight access points. So really, to switch from Powhatan standards to VDOT standards is going to go from ten per mile to eight eight access points per mile. And again, if we remove these, all of that vetting of that process will go to VDOT, and their engineers will determine the best point of access for applications that come through. Currently, in our rezonings, we require a traffic impact analysis. So any rezoning that comes through, we offer traffic impact, we require traffic impact analysis. As the director, I do have the ability to waive it. And so in some circumstances, that may be appropriate. But right now, that's currently what we have, is that you have to have traffic impact analysis on a rezoning. In Goochland, they break that out into a whole separate grouping of things. And you can see them here. Depending on what the project is, they might offer different requirements. Out of planning commission, planning commission's desire to send the board was that you would have traffic impact analysis on any land use case. So whether it be a CUP or rezoning, anything that came before us, we they wanted to have all the information upfront so that they could determine what was best. So I would think my position is, at least the rezoning we have, the majority of the the land use cases that we get are going to need a rezoning. So you're going to get a TIA the majority of the time. As far as the access management side of things, the needing of the waivers, it seems like VDOT is probably best capable to deal with those. And so I think it's prudent to approve this to make that happen. What we want to do about the TIA, my main concern is making sure that it's just equitable and making sure that everybody is on the same footing. And I think removing it and just leaving it the rezoning will have more than enough oversight. And it's hard for me proactively to think right now about what in the future we might need a TIA for that isn't already captured by the majority of the rezonings that we're going to get. And so I think any issues that we might come across, I think we can fix reactively. You know, we might find a project we said, you know, we might have wanted a TIA on that. We'll go ahead and we'll change the ones to address that. But right now, I can't really think of what that is outside of the majority of the rezonings that we're going to get. So I'll take questions.
Okay. Well, let's see if we have anybody from the public that would like to speak.
Thirty-four ninety-two, Richard Run, District Three, Powhatan, Virginia. What I can gather, we're talking about changing the turn lanes going into a business shopping center or something like that. I mean, it's a pet peeve of mine. Ain't nothing worse than me going down sixty. People go halfway up the turn turn lane, then slam on brakes, then get over. A lot of wrecks happened. I hate to see us reduce the lane. If you want to go, think VDOT is so great, drive through the Lothian, drive up through Chesapeake County. I guess what they go by. Same thing with in Rico County, short pump area. What we got seems like has been working if we enforce it. Sometimes we haven't enforced it. So I ask you, please, just keep what we have. Hopefully, that will keep working, and maybe we can get people to use the whole length of the lane. Thank you.
Not seeing anyone else. Mr. Smith, anyone on Zoom? Zoom is clear, Mr. Chair. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Board members, comments?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, Ms. Carmack.
That we
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call Frank back up for a question.
Hold on, we're making a motion. Go ahead. Go ahead with your motion.
I would like
Have the floor until you have the motion made.
Yeah, I would like to make the motion that we approve zero dash or oh dash two zero two two dash one one.
In the second? Second. Floor is now open, Mr. Williams.
Fair. Frankie says seventy percent needed some type of waiver.
Seventy-seven percent in the last five years.
In the last five years. What type of waiver? I mean, was it entrance spacing?
That's the predominant waiver.
So how many were there that actually came in that needed a waiver of the, I want to get at how you calculated seventy percent? Was it a large number or a small number? Because percentages can be misleading.
Sure.
Yeah, I was the one that put that together. It was looking at our rezonings and conditional use permits and site plans that we've processed over the past five years. I'd have to pull back up my original spreadsheet I was working on to see what that baseline number was. But it was, you know, I think we all know the the rough number of CUPs, rezoning site plans we've worked on the past few years. So
Because, you know, last time, Brett, when we had this conversation, when you were up, we went through the ones where, you know, we did a waiver. And it was like five, six?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to get my arms around. When you say seventy percent, again, seventy percent of what number? Because again, percentages can be misleading.
Sure. Yeah, it again, I don't offhand have the exact number, but it was looking at the rezoning as the CUP is on sixty, which was, yeah, it was probably in the five or six range. We hadn't had that many, actually.
Okay, when you go back and you looked originally at the two hundred and sixty-five parcels on Route Sixty, when we had our original discussion, it couldn't meet the six hundred and twenty-five entrance standard. when we had our original discussion, um, it couldn't meet the six hundred and twenty-five entrance standards. Okay, and then I asked you, well, go back and look at, how many would be able to develop using the V dot four hundred and ninety-five standard? That reduced the number down to what?
I believe it was two thirteen, it's in the report here, but once it was two thirteen?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Two twenty to two thirteen, I believe, that's right.
Right, and then, you know, we looked at how many parcels of that number, you know, could actually be developed because of their size, topography.
Yep, yeah, and a little, you know, a little bit of subjectivity in looking at that, but, you know, we've done this for a while now, so looking at ones that are either too narrow, you can't build anything on them, have wetlands, have riparian buffers, have streams, have extreme topography. Um, I would say about another forty, you could exclude that, that aren't developable, they'd have to be combined with other parcels, or they'll just.
So when you pull them out, that left, how many? I think it's twelve.
Yeah, we have, uh, have the full chart here, but it was then, uh, yeah, get fewer parcels once you start to narrow it down.
If you do the math, if you start doing the subtractions, you add up the subtractions and put that against the two six five, it looks like it's around twelve.
Wasn't everything?
Is that correct?
Sorry, twelve would be, would be what we had two hundred and thirteen roughly that would need a waiver from V dot, um, and then of those, forty wouldn't, I don't think be developable, so, uh, that would be like one seventy left.
Excuse me?
That would be like a hundred and seventy then left, parcels on sixty that would not meet, uh, V dots, would still need a waiver from V dot.
Excuse me. All right, we started with two hundred and sixty-five parcels. Of those, two hundred and thirty-three cannot meet the six hundred and twenty-five foot requirement, access requirement. Then two hundred and thirteen would appear, would appear unable to meet the V dot minimum, uh, standard, so that's two hundred and thirteen. Then approximately forty of those parcels, so if you take the two hundred and thirteen and add that to forty, that's, uh.
Correct, so yeah, if, if in the, uh, chart here, are you all seeing that?
No.
Um, the, the chart we have titled Route sixty growth areas on the right, we had forty-seven, uh, one and four, so then yeah, if you took the forty off of that, you're, you're correct, it would be twelve left.
Twelve left. Brett, I look at, uh, when we're taking out, I think it's important, the whole conversation started about spacing, the six twenty-five versus the four twenty-five. And then we had a motion that said, let's just default to V dot, take everything out that we had done. The access management standards, again, were developed back in two thousand and four on the Planning Commission. I was on it. Kurt Turner, who later became the planning director of Chesterfield, assisted us on that effort. And so the people in the audience will understand, because it, you can't really understand from the report, Frank wasn't here. That's in defense of you, Frank. So the reason we did that is because we knew as a rural county, we need to protect and preserve air roads in Palatine County, not only for public safety, but for through traffic, capacity, et cetera. Because we knew we weren't gonna get the federal funds. We get, as Brett knows, we get two votes down at the Richmond Regional Transportation Planning Organization. And the big four, well, they get the big, you know, they get the, the big boats, and they get the big bucks. So the competition for the federal dollars was gonna be very intense for a rural county like Palatine County. So again, it was very important for us to do everything that we could for public safety and road capacity in Palatine County. Mrs. Carmack remembers, since she was on the Planning Commission, they did something great. When we had Walmart come in, I forget what year it was, was it two thousand? But anyway, they insisted on double turn lanes going into Walmart. Wow, hasn't that paid off for us? Now, we didn't need them probably at that time, but haven't they been a benefit to us today? Because the Planning Commission had the forethought to say, no, we need to do this, not for today, but for tomorrow. Now, when I look at, we're taking out all these things, you know, auxiliary lanes, you know, standards, and a lot of the localities, what they'll do is, before I come back to what we're taking out, they won't have their own access management standards replete. What they'll have is different things like Chesterfield. Any of the major roads, you come in with their development, you gonna put in a turn lane. Okay, but they don't have their own access management standards. Goochland does. And Goochland does something very good, you know, for the development community. They classify every road by name, and they give it a, a number. The number corresponds to a category, major, minor arterial, collector, major collector, minor collector, local road. And they assign what, if you're gonna come in with an entrance or development on that road, these are the standards you're gonna have to meet. So it's published right up front. You see it. Traffic impact analysis, they don't, uh, depend on V dot. V dot, I think, goes by peak hours. You know, if you're generating more than a hundred, and they also have a secondary condition, I don't recall exactly what it is, but anyway, Goochland gets into different scenarios where if you're increasing traffic, for example, by a certain percentage on a collector road, then they wanna know that, and they will require, it may not be a hundred, but because of the category of the road, it's important that the traffic impact study be done so that they know the impact. So when we start taking out everything, intersection standards, shared driveways, interparcel connections, we need to be aware of what we're doing, 'cause this isn't just about, as we started out, using the spacing on Route sixty, you know, and saying, well, we need to do this for economic development. As you heard me say earlier, we have to get in and know this county. We can ill afford to turn Route sixty into Midlothian or Short Pump, because we won't be able to get in and know this county. As a rural county, we go to work every day in the Richmond region, east side of this county. So I'm gonna be opposing this tonight for the reasons I just went through. I'm absolutely positive that I'm not gonna prevail on the vote, but I think it's important that you know why we did this, and understand, and take up your minds for yourself, the efficacy of taking all of this out and just defaulting to V dot, because everything you see in Midlothian, Short Pump, V dot approved. And I'm not V dot bashing. I think V dot does a good job with what they have, with their, with their mission. Because as the regional director told me one time at a PD's, or excuse me, RRTPO meeting, he said, we wanna say yes to development. It's up to us whether or not we have the political will to be able to have the type of access management and type of traffic we want in Palatine County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Webs, you're very welcome.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Carmack.
Let's make a couple of points. I first would like to address, uh, the citizen that came up and mentioned about, uh, V dot. V dot in twenty seventeen had a major overhaul to their access management regulations. That's really when they implemented it. So for the fear that Ca- Palatine County is gonna look like Chesterfield, that's simply not true. Uh, the reality is, the reason being is they redid all of their access management standards to prohibit what they have in parts of Chesterfield County. Um, the traffic impacts analysis, as staff iterated, we will get that, that will be done with the rezoning. For instance, the double turn lanes that are turning into Walmart was a proffer that had nothing to do with our access management standards. It was a proffer. Two thousand and four, the Planning Commission, you know, implemented the access management standards, and one of the big issues is the spacing requirements from four hundred and ninety-five to six hundred and twenty-five. The six hundred and twenty-five, no one knows where the number came from. We still don't know where the number came from. There's been some thoughts, rumors, that it came from the American Association of Traffic and Safety Engineers, but the data doesn't show exactly where that number precipitated from. Um, as far as preserving our roads, preserving safety, I'd like to ask a question of my fellow board members. What criteria do we use in granting a waiver? And where is that criteria listed anywhere in any ordinance plan? Do we have any criteria? So.
Well, I'll respond, Mrs. Carmack, if that's a question to the board.
Yes, where is the criteria?
There isn't any criteria, and that's part of the problem why we took the waivers, uh, away from staff. We said we had to approve them. And now we're approving them with V dot at the table discussing them with them. If you notice, anytime I've done this, I've said, I wanna know what V dot says, okay? Because every such in, situation is nuanced by the type of development.
If we're asking what V dot says, why don't we use their standards? So, that being said.
Is that a question for the?
No, that's just a statement. It's a rhetorical question. It concerns me that we have no, as I said earlier, we have no criteria when evaluating a waiver, and it's done on a whim. If we like the project, we waive it. If we don't, we don't waive it. There's no quantitative analysis illustrating the six hundred and twenty-five feet is more effective or safer than the four hundred and ninety-five. And no one can point to exactly what purpose they serve and why we have them, other than the Planning Commission put them in place in two thousand and four. And the Planning Commission, last time I checked, does not have a PE degree next to each of their, you know, names. To me, it's another layer of bureaucracy that serves no purpose. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Williams.
And granted, these waivers, we've had times in this county where we didn't always know that there was a waiver being granted. Now, we don't have criteria for V dot when they do a waiver. And they do waivers, as we know. Going back to the Planning Commission, I can tell you the sources at that time, it was the Institute of Traffic Engineers and ASHTI, which is an acronym. American Association of Traffic Engineers and something else. That was in, that's in the old subdivision ordinance. So there was something it was tied to back then. Uh, I don't know what the Institute of Traffic Engineers says today. But I've always appreciated the fact, when somebody had to come in, and they said, well, it doesn't meet the standard, then I get to develop the issue more thoroughly. And I'd be able to discuss it and make a better decision as opposed to just automatically going to a lesser standard. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Cox.
Good, um, we put up classic granite. Uh, first, I haven't heard the problem with our access management standards yet. So until I hear real problems, uh, it's a solution in search of a problem. This is classic granite. Right up where it says Route sixty, you see that little turn lane that's coming, if you're on westbound sixty, that would be a turn lane to your left into classic granite. It is not approved. It's part of the, this is part of the conceptual plan. That turn lane meets V dot standards. It does not meet our standards. And so the question becomes, do you approve it or not? Mrs. Carmack wanted to know, what criteria do you use? Well, I wanna know, since as you're looking up there to the right side, would be going back to Page Road and County Line Road. You see where the corner is, that is pretty close to where that, uh, cutover is, how much storage is there for large semi trucks before they begin to impede the prop, the probably, uh, intersection at Page Road? So if we pass this ordinance, they can put it in by V dot standards. If, under our old rules, they have to come to us, we get to evaluate what we know about our traffic, our neighborhoods, and make a decision whether it makes sense or not. I don't see that as a problem. I don't see that as discriminatory, discriminatory. I don't see that as, uh, being anything other than practical. So there are all kinds of nuances to this, not all of which are obvious. Uh, so, uh, I, I hear, Ms. Carmack, what you say about new standards for V dot. But short pump, three sixty are the showcases for traffic that we're looking to have in Palatine County. And we've got to keep the traffic moving. We are commuter community. More entrances onto sixty, and there won't be many more, as you saw, it, you know, doesn't affect many pieces of property. So why are we doing this? I have yet to hear any compelling reasons why it makes any sense to change what has been working for us. It hadn't hurt us. And I think it helps us in the long term. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Carmack.
Second time again, if somebody comes in for a rezoning, what do they have to do? A traffic impact analysis. If they do a traffic impact analysis, and we find that there is improvements that are needed on sixty, what can we ask for? A proffer, something to mitigate, offset the issue. It's, so it's not like we get rid of these standards and we have no say-so authority. That's, that's simply not true. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Cox.
In, in terms of Mrs. Carmack's motion, uh, I'm confused because staff hasn't given you a complete motion to deal with. They have left the whole TIA section in Goochland County all up in the air. We don't, that's an unknown piece. I just saw the Goochland piece for the very first time. So we, I don't like what the Planning Commission said, which is a TIA on everything. I, I, okay, so I don't, I can't vote tonight on what the TIA requirements are going to be, because we don't have them, we haven't talked about them, and they weren't in the package. So I, I, you know, so I, I have some confusion about what really we would be voting on, reference to the TIA side. Thank you.
Okay. Do you remember your motion?
Yes, my motion is basically to revert our county standards to our current county access management standards to V dot standards. The, the TIA has, there's nothing in that regarding the TIA.
I, I didn't think there was.
Yeah, that there, so the, the Planning Commission sent up a recommendation, that was it.
I, I got your motion. I, I got your motion. Mr. McLeod, second the motion. Let's have a roll call vote. Mr. Williams.
No.
Mr. McLeod.
Yay.
Mr. Cox.
No.
Mrs. Carmack.
Aye.
Mr. Barley.
Aye.
Motion carries three to two. We will revert the VDOT standards. By the way, thank you, VDOT, for being in the audience tonight. You waited very patiently and I appreciate it very much. We all do. See, this is oh twenty twenty-two dash oh seven, case twenty-one dash ten rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is for rezoning ordinance request for DJM Ventures in District Two. Request rezoning of tax map parcel forty-two dash eighty-two D from A-ten to Commerce Center and requires a public hearing. Mr. Hopkins, please update us on the ordinance.
This is a rezoning request you'll call at the general commercial to CC rezoning. We did every building in the growth areas, every parcel in the growth areas in general commercial. The structures on them, this is a companion case. The original rezoning had that case inside of it. Okay. So really, it's just for the adjacent parcel. And the reason being is really for the access portion of the lot. Here you can see an overview of the lot. As the access goes to the adjacent parcel, which is the one in question tonight, that borders Urbine Road to the west, comes through an A-ten parcel as part of our ordinance, that property line that's running there has to have a type B buffer against the other parcel under common ownership. So anytime that a commercial parcel is bordering an A-ten parcel, you have to have a type B buffer. Well, if you did that in this case, it would basically eat up the only area in which the access could come out to Urbine Road. If you recall, I spoke at the prior planning or planning or board meeting in that larger rezoning about this case specifically. And we, we tried to vet going through the east to the O'Reilly's property in trying to figure that out. If you've been out, there's a big grade and O'Reilly's is going to end up leveling out. So the cost is going to be cost prohibitive really for anybody to build out to come up that way, especially for a small restaurant. So realistically, it's going to have to come out Urbine Road. They're going to close their sixty entrance, which is proffered as part of this case. And this is about the western parcel here only to go to CC. And I can tell you again, if you've been out there, it is an undeveloped parcel. It is basically swamp land. There is a stream running through it and they plan to put a BMP in there as well. But really, we'd like to just have this site plan essentially cleaned up, possibly move the property line, or at least free them up from not having to put in a buffer that would eat up their access.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins. We'll open up the public hearing now. Or actually, if the applicant would like to have anything they want to say.
Thank you for letting us come up or me come up. When we bought this property in two thousand sixteen, it was all commercial. And it was set aside, which we've been keeping up since then. And probably, as you all know, because we have, as we called our dream. And at the time, they were both commercial. And then in two thousand eighteen, which we had no idea, they were turned to agriculture. The one property that we're talking about right now, as Frank said, is we never even imagined even doing anything with. It was, came with that property. And we didn't realize too, that the driveway going in the back goes with what you've now called agricultural. So we have our plans drawn up. We have our dream, but we don't know how to get into it. Which is our property. And we just want to be able to, I guess, I, I don't understand how we can't have a driveway on a property that we already own. And I understand all the rules and stuff, but, I mean, it's our property. So all we want to do is have fifteen feet to drive in. We're not doing any commercial, anything on that corner lot. And if the county ever wants to do anything with it, we would gladly let you do something with it because we're not doing anything with it. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Now we'll open up for the public hearing. Does anyone who wishes to make a comment on this?
State of the bar on thirty-four ninety-two, Richard's Run District Three. I know the applicants personally, they're great people. They run some good restaurants around town. At the hearing where she said, I think y'all need to help them out, I'll be honest with you. I mean, you know, they bought it, things have changed since they bought it. As long as you got enough of a turn lane there, whatever you need, you don't have any access to Urbine, don't have so much traffic on there. And that grant, it can possibly increase down the road, I know that. But I think, you know, it'd be a good addition to the community. That's a small business there that we could use. So please consider approving it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public? Anyone on Zoom, Mr. Smith?
Zoom is clear, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair. Not seeing anyone else from the public. We'll close the public comment period. Now it's to the board. Yes, Mr. McLeod.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
In accordance with Article Two, the Powhatan County zoning ordinance and public necessity, convenience, general welfare and good zoning practice, the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors recommends approval of requests submitted by DJM Ventures to rezone tax map parcel four one dash eight two oh with proffered conditions.
I'll second that. Comments, questions, board members? Just barely. Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Mr. Hopkins. If I understand it on page ninety-one, that's conceptual plan from the prior, is that correct?
Correct.
And it shows the entrance coming through this property.
Correct.
And the use is to be a restaurant, is that correct?
Correct.
Can we, how do you have a commercial entrance that's twenty-four feet wide? You can't do that, can you? Mr. Shortan knows. That's what it's, just what it showed.
This, the, that's the, the drive aisle with the, the actual throw to the entrance itself would have to be a commercial spec, which would be meet VDOT requirement. So that's just showing the, the actual drive aisles themselves, which would be twelve and twelve.
Mr. Hopkins, have, there's no VDOT information on Urbine Road. All the information is over on sixty, which is being closed and going, I understand it. So why don't we have any, unfortunately, they just left. Why don't we have any VDOT information on Urbine Road?
Sure. To be perfectly honest with you, that would be my error, probably early on when I took this case months ago. I didn't know that TIA was a requirement.
Now, Mr. Lackney has issued a legal opinion about the use of the building. Would you like to take us through that?
I think the building can be used, has been the historical practice of our department, that it could be used.
I asked about Mr. Lackney's opinion.
Sure.
Let me ask a question, Mr. Cox. Does this line of questioning where you're going have anything to do with the rezoning of forty-one dash eighty-two D? Mr. Barley, at our discussion at our last meeting, we said we could put any proppers on this that we wanted to. Okay, and so one of the proppers that you could put on this is that the building could not be used for restaurants. So we need to find the facts of the case. That's all I'm trying to do.
Okay, Mr. Cox.
So there is a direct correlation. So, Mr. Hopkins. Holly, could you put up, I think it's called Lackney? This is the legal opinion from our county attorney dated in January. Mr. Lackney, this is, this is yours. Could you give us this? I, I don't think we need to read it all. Could you give us a summation of what, what, what your opinion was?
Yeah, it's, we, we have a section in our code on non-conforming uses and non-conforming structures. This, this particular structure doesn't meet our current setbacks. And under county code, if you abandon a, a non-conforming use for more than two years, you can't restart it. There's, there's case law out there that says whether it's the use of the building, use of the property, use of, it, it's all rolled into one under state code, under vested rights. There's no, you don't have any vested right if you abandoned a non-conforming use. And so my opinion is and continues to be that since it's been abandoned for well over two years, and it was abandoned at the time that the purchaser purchased it, it can't be revived now as, as a lawful use.
So in a practical matters, we go forward, what happens?
Well, technically, the use of the building would be at the development stage and not at the rezoning stage. Although you, as you mentioned, you could ask for a proffer. But technically, whether the building can or cannot be used, isn't a zoning question. It's, it's a development question, which comes after a rezoning.
But it's, you have a legal opinion that we can't use this. And so are you telling me that Mr. Hopkins can redefine what our ordinances are?
No, I'm telling you, the zoning administrator has the final authority to determine whether something is conforming or non-conforming and to grant vested rights. That is statutorily delegated to the zoning administrator.
How does that, I'm, I'm, I understand that, but you've issued a legal opinion. Help me marry the two together.
Well, as pretty prob, pretty much everybody in the board's probably had the, at some point, hey, it's just your opinion. And, you know, it is a legal opinion. And the Attorney General himself says, it's just my opinion. And, and I don't have any enforcement power. I don't have anything to make anybody follow my opinions. I just give opinions.
If you're a citizen and you're not following an ordinance in the county and so, and there's a complaint, what happens? We, 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 we investigated and we enforce our ordinances, right?
Most of the time, not always.
But we tried to.
Yeah, not always. It's, it's a case, it's case specific.
So we have a situation where Mr. Hopkins allows the use of the building for a restaurant. And we got a legal opinion from you. What, what is, what is the remedy?
Well, the remedy, if there is one, if you want to call it a remedy, neighbors could theoretically file a suit within the statutory time period and challenge the finding by Mr. Hopkins and say it was illegal.
So we would be suing ourselves?
No, no, neighbor, a neighbor and property owner.
So anybody can, anybody can do that, right?
Yes.
Okay. So I, I just find this beyond comprehension that we are deciding how to define at staff level what our ordinances are.
Thank, just so it's not.
Can you help me?
Yeah, yeah, so.
Thank you.
Um, and also just so it's not, to give some context and some history to it, it's not just Mr. Hopkins interpretation. This has historically been the way we've interpreted this section of the non-conforming code. As you recall, we approved three crosses the ceiling. That's within the setback of Route thirteen. We approved a license agreement to allow Four Seasons Restaurant to build additional onto their property within the Route thirteen setback. So in both of those cases, we looked at them. We looked at our code section that says when you have non-conforming structure, you can expand it so long as you don't come closer to the road. You can essentially draw a line along the front and build to the back of that. When I was in this position of zoning administrator, I, I would interpret it the same way as Mr. Hopkins. Reached out to our prior planning director and also zoning administrator, Mr. Pompege, to say, with this situation, you know, you're in the seat, how have you interpreted it? He would interpret it the same way as Mr. Hopkins and I. Then I looked back and found some cases, I believe those Millet Find Creek many years ago got a condition lease permit for non-conforming expansion. In that staff report, the planning director at the time, I don't recall who it was, this was, you know, ten years ago, probably. In the staff report, they said Powhatan Planning Department has consistently interpreted that you can build along a non-conforming structure so long as you don't build closer to the road. So again, this isn't, this might be the first time, you know, we've really dug into one recently on this, but it's consistently, we as staff had interpreted this section this way. I would say if the board doesn't like that interpretation, we, we need to amend our zoning ordinance because there is a section that says, you know, essentially just that, that when you have a non-conforming structure, so long as you're not coming closer to the road, or increasing the non-conformity, you can do so. You can, you can build onto the back or sides of it. So again, you know, that's kind of a policy decision for the board. If you don't like that, we can amend the zoning ordinance to do so. But again, just wanted to provide some context that this is, is consistent with how prior zoning administrators have interpreted similar situations.
Anyone else?
Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Brad, come on back up.
Yes.
If you found that you've been following your taxes wrong for the last five years, would you keep following them wrong this year?
I would not see that as an analogous comment for comparison. Because I, I believe we are following the ordinance correctly. Again, if we don't like what the ordinance is creating, then we need to amend the ordinance. But it, it has a section that very clearly says you can do just that, and that's how it's been interpreted. Again, we've had cases that have come before the board, Four Seasons and Three Crosses, and it was never brought up as an issue then. But if we want to change it, we certainly can. You know, I, I respect Mr. Lackney's opinion. You know, we non-conforming zoning law in Virginia is a very complex nuanced issue. So I can see his interpretation of it, but I believe ours is, is correct according to our zoning ordinance is currently written. But I would agree with him that if the board so chooses to change it, you absolutely legally can restrict them in such a way as he's talked about. But again, that's, that's not how I read or interpret the ordinance today, not how it's been interpreted by staff in years.
So we would have to include everything Tom said about if it had been abandoned for more than two years, then you can come back with the same use and use, you know, the same, same.
So that, the, when dealing with the use of the building, that's currently in there. So I think, and that's where, that's the one part of it that, that we just disagree on is the, the, where use and structure differentiate. So our ordinance does say a use of a building, if abandoned for two years, can't be continued unless it's in accordance with the zoning ordinance. So if, well, it's kind of what we undid last month or the month before with the proactive rezoning to CC. So if you had a building that was operating, a daycare center and C, general commercial zoning, for example, we took that use out. Now you have it, you can continue it as a non-conforming use. If they abandoned it for two years, you could not then restart that use in the building without rezoning to CC or something like that. But that's the, the use happening inside the building. We have a separate specific section that deals with structures and non-conforming structures. And that's where it says you can expand them so long as it is not increasing the non-conformity. As far as the use, them proposing to rezone to CC would address the use issue on this part of the property. That was addressed on the, the actual subject restaurant property last month or whenever it was that the board practically rezoned the C parcel. So the use part of it is okay. Now we're just talking about structure non-conformity.
What I don't want to do is to give people the impression that if the planning director, you know, says in his opinion and meets the spirit, then you're going to be okay. I don't, I don't want to get, I know you don't want that. I don't, I don't think y'all, either one of you want that. I, I, I think you want things spelled out. You're the keeper of the rules. And I don't want to give the people in the audience the impression that we will do things one way for one applicant and not do it for other applicants.
Correct. Now, I would say just, just the opposite. It's to me spelled out very clearly in the ordinance. So we're not making a stretch interpretation. We're talking about spirit of the ordinance. We're, we're applying it as it's written word for word and we're not doing anything different for them. Again, this is, this is how it's been consistently interpreted over the years.
Well, it needs to be fixed if we want to change it. But, but I am concerned about Mr. Lackney's response that somebody could sue us. Do you concur with that?
I mean, somebody could always file a.
I know, but this is a rezoning and you know how that works.
Sure.
You know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, you know, and looking at the case law dealing with non-conforming, there has been some, you know, lawsuits over the years, developing case law. And I remember one, I don't remember the actual, which the case was, I could look it up. But it says, when dealing with non-conforming structures and their expansion, there should be great deference. But it says, when dealing with nonconforming structures and their expansion, there should be great deference given to how that statute's been interpreted in the past by staff. So again, even the courts recognize kind of that issue that the county should be consistent. So, um, I wouldn't expect a legal challenge on this. If it did, again, I believe we're interpreting it correctly. And then also we're in line with what the courts have upheld, that you should be consistent, we're, we're being consistent. So, um, one other thing I'll add to, you know, we, we always have to worry about what we do. It's not just one parcel, one building, but whether the consequences for, for other parcels. So, uh, we looked and to see if there were other similar parcels with buildings close to Route 60. I was surprised to find so few, I thought there would be more, but actually it's deceptive, most of them are actually well outside of the setback. So again, i- if you don't like how this section of the ordinance is written, we certainly need to amend it. But if we keep it, again, we've consistently interpreted this way, and I don't see a flurry of dozens of buildings all expanding along Route 60. Again, this one's, um, fairly unique in that regard.
All right, let me move to another question. Parking spaces. I remember when Mr. Sowers came in with his apartments, y'all counted parking spaces. Let's see if it was the requisite number based on the number of units and the type of units, is that correct? Okay. How many parking spaces will this use require?
Yeah, we, we, you know, we'd probably look at that at the, the site plan stage, Mr. Sowers' project was a little different in just the massive mountain park. I think it would generate, um, this being a smaller one, we would typically look at, at its site plan. We could pull up the ordinance and see what the generation is for restaurant, I don't recall.
Okay, cause right now you're showing, I think, twenty some.
Yeah, and that, that came up at planning commission, only the first time when they looked at it and the applicant, um, you know, said they, they could adjust that when we get to site plan depending on, um, the deeds. But they felt, again, they operate a few of these, they felt that it would be adequate for the demand they'd expected this restaurant. And again, when we go through the site plan, it will meet our ordinance requirement.
What about the park that is proposing to put in with it? Does that have a, a chip generation, trip generation factor associated with that?
The park?
The, I, I've got a question here.
Okay, John, missed, did I miss something?
We're rezoning this parcel, and we're not talking about a development, are we? That's, are we talking about developing this, this property? Either, I mean, there's two parcels here. We're only talking about, the way I read this, the rezoning of forty-one dash eighty-two D. I mean, they may make this, uh, a gym, as far as I know, they may make it a restaurant, they may put a church there, I don't know what they're gonna put there. But I know that, that the property's been rezoned and now we're, we're trying to rezone this parcel, and that's all I'm saying, Mr. Williams. I know, I think you're on a, a good track, don't get me wrong.
No, I, I, if I misspoke, I apologize, but, um, I thought I read somewhere in the staff report that I did.
Yeah, so in, in my initial conversation with them, we talked about, um, preserving green space and also potentially having a space for children to play. So I convinced that into a proper to make a park or a preserve space, green space, at least on the property for that.
Is, is the park gonna be something that people are going to access separate from going to the restaurant? That was my question. Okay. Thank you, John.
Mr. Chairman made a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, for your comments and questions. Yes, Mr. McClung.
I made a motion.
Yep, it's been seconded.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Cox.
Mr. Lackney, if you'd help me, uh, you've listened to, uh, Mr. Shardine's explanation, has any of that changed, uh, how you view this?
Not at all.
Thank you.
Good, let's have a roll call vote, Mr. Smith. Mr. Williams?
No.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Oh.
Ms. Carmack?
Aye.
Mr. Barley?
Aye.
Motion passes three to two. Next up, ordinance zero-two-zero-two-two dash oh-six, Powhatan County.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ordinance zero-two-zero-two-two dash zero-six requests a change in the social services board from an administrative board to an advisory board pursuant to Virginia Code sixty-three dot two dash three oh-two. Mr. Chairman, this action requires a public hearing.
Okay, the floor is open for the public hearing.
Jacqueline Anderson, three-three-four-two Pineacre Drive. I sit on an advisory board for the school system and frankly, it's a, it's a dog and pony show. We are advised on what the school administration wants us to know, but we are not asked to give advice on anything. It's a one-way street, and I would hate to see that happen to our social services board. No one denies that the previous board dropped the ball on some important decisions and issues. However, you have just appointed two highly competent individuals. Allow them to work with the rest of the board and the new director for the good of Powhatan. This ordinance states that the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors desires to replace the current local board with an appointed government official. It boils down to, do you believe in limited government or not? If you do, why would you vote to take control from a group of citizens, a group of Powhatan citizens, and give control to an individual government official who might not even be a resident of the county? I ask that you remember the words of Ronald Reagan who said, quote, "The most terrifying words in English language are, I'm from the government and I'm here to help," end quote. Please vote no on this measure. Thank you.
Steven Barron, thirty-four ninety-two, Riches Run, District Three. Oh, heard a woman talk about ball that dropped, that dropped a whole lot of ways, board, people we got representatives up there on the thing. Oh, I have to agree, why do we want to take it as citizens of this county? Put in control of a non-elected official? I mean, I'm sorry, all I hear is that county administrators overloaded, now we're gonna put, throw another load on the mule? Well, we do that, then we're gonna hire another person to take care of that, and that's more expense. Had opportunity to take care of some problems about taxes, and all we keep doing is adding more, adding more people to the payroll, building an empire. Tell you one thing, you keep building empire for some of these people around here, they're gonna regret it. You got citizens trying to do a good job, they're getting their time free. But yet we want to give it to somebody else in government to run it for us, to tell us how to do it. But how's that been working out for us here lately? Not too good, I don't think. Maybe I'm just not real happy with government. So the average person in this country, an average person in this county is getting really fed up with government, big time. So think before you act, I know what we say, starting to look like doesn't really matter. I hate to say that. I had high hopes of this board. But like everything in life, sometime you, your hopes get rained on, or other words, I can't say that, could be inappropriate of meeting like this. So please think before y'all act and vote, and have faith in the citizens, at least on this issue. Thank you very much, have a good night.
Anyone on Zoom, Mr. Smith?
Zoom is clear, Mr. Chair.
We're gonna close the public hearing. Board members, comments?
Chairman?
Yes.
Like to make a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to move that we approve ordinance zero dash two-zero-two-two dash zero-six.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. McClung? Floor is open, comments, questions?
Question for a representative on the social services board, why are we doing this?
Holly, can you pull up my presentation? I think that's a law for a little clarity. So I've served on the social service board for two years now, uh, currently, and basically it's not running as efficiently as it could. Uh, we are currently an administrative board, there's two types you can have per state code, an administrative or an advisory. We're currently operating as an administrative. And if you read, I said I would never do this, one of these PowerPoints with these, all these bullet points, but unfortunately, this is what comes straight out of state code. So the administrative board functions, if you see, are pretty, um, robust. They are, should be preparing budgets and reports to state and local officials, employment of legal counsel and civil matters, can you go to the next slide? Uh, placement of adult protective services, placement of children and adults in foster homes or other facilities where appropriate. So currently, we have not been operating at all as an administrative board, um, can you go to the next slide? Advisory role functions, uh, we have been operating more as an advisory role from what I have witnessed over two years. And candidly, we haven't been doing that very well. If you, you know, I'll give you a second to read some of these, um, bullet points, meet with your local government officials who constitutes the local board at least four times per year. Monitor of the formulation and implementation of the social service program by the local department. Can you go to the next slide? Create and implement policy and community outreach that is agreed upon by the social service board, executive director and county administrator. It's a much more, uh, appropriate role for the citizen makeup, and here's why I say that, after what I've witnessed, witnessed. Communication and accountability, the social service board has similar authority to the board of supervisors and school board. However, there's no voter or citizen accountability, they have as much cri- they have as much rights as us, as a board of supervisors or a school board, yet they have no oversight. They have no citizen accountability, no oversight whatsoever. They're responsible for the third, third largest budget in the county, twenty-nine employees, four-point-three million, they have no bylaws. How should the meetings be run? How many meetings can a board member miss? Do they have a remote policy, a Zoom policy? Transparency, they have no video, no audio of board meetings or any sort of public accountability. So there's definitely been an ineffective communication between social, social service board, social service staff, county staff. There's been discrepancies in appointment dates, we've witnessed that ourselves the past month. In fact, we just, I can iterate this again, we just appointed, um, two new members. And we got it, received an email from one of the new members, and she said, "I was told I am on this board, but what do I do? Where do I go?" In other words, okay, is it the social service executive director? Is it Mr. Smith? No. Is it me as the social service board member? Is it the chairman of the social service board? There's no criteria of any of that, of a leadership hierarchy. We need a better understanding of roles and responsibilities. I had, in fact, one of the, uh, social service board members ask me, you know, why she didn't know more about her roles and responsibilities at the last board meeting. I couldn't answer her, I don't know why you don't know more about your roles and responsibilities. There's a lag time between meetings that can cause disruption in flow of communication. Next, so, and I want to point out the board historical engagement since, uh, twenty-nineteen through twenty-twenty-one. Only three of the nineteen meetings had all five voting board members present. The board member number one, he was, he missed seven of nineteen, board member number two, six of nineteen. Board member number three, absent nine of nineteen. Board member number four, absent zero, his term began October of twenty-twenty. Board number, number five, absent two of nineteen. So a couple of them, you know, definitely made a priority of coming to the meetings. Next page, the current board status, board member one, appointed just, um, a few weeks ago. Board member number two, appointed a few weeks ago. Board number, number, board member number three, term ends in August of twenty-twenty-two. Board member number four, term ends September twenty-twenty-two. Board number, number five just resigned, so there's another opening. And my point of put, bringing the current board member status up is you have a board that technically should be overseeing placing children in foster care, placing children or adults in adult protective services, overseeing a four-point-three million dollar budget, doing performance analysis, uh, policy, and we can ensure that they're gonna show up at the meeting. Next slide. I did poll the department heads in social services, which nobody had asked before, what does their staff want? Four out of the five recommended and supported moving from administrative to advisory board. Uh, it would have improved accountability to the citizens of Powhatan, improved communication and transparency, and overall improved budgetary oversight by us, the elected officials. That's why.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Ms. Carmack, thank you for that overview, uh, very helpful. What happens when you get appointed to the social services board?
You should technically go for state training within ninety days, which the state training's pretty weak. I think if you ask any, there's a social service board member out there and she would agree, the, the state training is not, not very, very good.
Do we do that?
The board members, yeah, they do go to the state training.
Okay.
Yeah, they have to.
Okay.
And they, let me answer one thing, Mr. Williams, the state training is the same for advisory or administrative. There's no different training for either, either board.
Okay. Because I, I, I'd heard that it wasn't replete, so in your two years working in social services, what kind of communication, what kind of assistance and guidance did you get from the director?
Uh, I had a good relationship with the director, I reached out to her fairly often.
Well, what about in terms of the way that she mentors her board? Because obviously, when you get into all these different, um, service delivery programs that they have in social service, and there are many and they're complicated. And we know they're expensive, I couldn't tell you what they are. But I can tell you, serving on a board, I know what kind of questions to ask. What was the communication in terms of mentoring that board that you were receiving from the social services director to help y'all understand as a board what your role was and what reports were you getting?
She required the members, I came in after most of these members had been on for two years, so I can't speak to what kind of training they received. Yeah, my two years, um, I, we reviewed the financials. That was pretty much what we reviewed, we reviewed the financials. We would get the monthly financial statement, review it, looks good, check it off, and moved on.
So you were just, you know, one of my biggest gripes is, and don't expect me to go to meetings where nothing's getting done. Nobody, nobody has any ambition to go and do that. Did you get quarterly reports from state in terms of how well the department was doing in Powhatan County? In terms of, was it meeting its performance objectives or performance standards?
No.
You should have, and those, those, those quarterly reports should have been shared with the board. And the board, if they saw those quarterly reports, would see that we weren't meeting the indicators. For example, completing things at a certain, you know, percentage. We're in the red. You know, when this whole thing came up, I went up there and looked and, you know, started seeing, okay, what is going on in Powhatan County? How well are we doing our job? But y'all never got anything, did you?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One thing I would like to point out, two, two points. First, the board members are oversee the executive director. It, it's like us with Mr. Smith, if we're not happy that we're not getting a report, it's upon us to ask him for that report. That, that's, that's the kind of board we have set up right now. The fact that if she did give the reports, didn't give the reports, that's not on her, that's on the board. Secondly, the numbers. Secondly, the numbers that you indicate that, you know, we're in the red, I think that's a little bit of a misnomer, and it's a little bit of a false accusations, for lack of a better way of speaking. And I can't speak very fluidly to that, but with the size of our jurisdiction, with the criteria we have, a lot of times, we will be in the red. That doesn't mean we're not meeting criteria, and there is somebody here from social services. I don't know if we could call on her, if it would give you some sense of assurance of what these numbers mean, as opposed to just saying that we're not meeting performance standards.
We can, we can come back to that, but, you know, it would be helpful, you know, if we had the reports for the last two years and pass them among the board members, and everybody could see what I'm talking about, you know, where we're, where we're meeting and where they've got in red, and how we're doing comparing to the locales, that's all I'm saying.
Mr. Latchney?
But let me finish, I'm not through yet. So you come on a board, you expect to have, you know, the Director mentoring the board, I would hope, but that wasn't going on. Moreover, you know, when we had people coming off the board, we weren't even notified as a Board of Supervisors. Never told. And that, we had Mr. Burnett, who left, I believe, in August of 2021. We didn't get notified about a vacancy under upcoming appointments to boards and commissions. Then I looked at the minutes. Minutes said, you know, the former Director said, "Well, we're going to have two vacancies because one of the members goes off at the end of December." Well, that's two. But yet, we were never told to advertise for replacement for those people, and yet we had, you know, you as our representative on the board to come back and just share that information. I'll go back to the person that we were told, or excuse me, was referred to in the minutes, that person wasn't scheduled to come off. We only found out later that that person shouldn't have come off, that really they had months to continue, but that came out later. So even as recently as December, I talked to Brett, and Brett had information from the Director that said the composition of social services was you and the two members of the CPMT team. Former Director advised Brett that we, those were the only three that we were responsible for, that social services took care of the other two appointments. That wasn't true. Then later, you know, adding to the confusion, it was communicated again to Mr. Stout. This was February 14th, because my representative called me, because he was told through you that you and he were the only two members on the board. It also turned out not to be true. So then we found out that Mr. Smith wasn't coming off till the end of February. The other two members didn't come off till August or September. Now, all this time, we've had staff here in the county tracking the appointments. We've had at least four different individuals I know work on that. As recently as the last meeting, I had the Assistant County Administrator working on that. That's just count, you know, tracking who goes on the board and who comes off. And those are four-year appointments. It shouldn't be that hard, but we seem to can't get that right, something that fundamental. So we went six months, a half a year, without knowing that there were vacancies, and it was not until two weeks before the meeting in February was it advertised on Facebook that we needed to fill positions to places. That's never happened before. So if I have a concern about all of this, you know, boards, let me tell you something. When you come in, you expect to be able to be, have in-service training to understand and to be mentored. And everything I'm seeing right now about moving from administrative to advisory, I have no confidence that it's going to solve any problem, because people are the critical difference. And right now, we're not doing a very good job on the county side, just keeping track of the appointments. So when you get into this thing about, we're now going to move to, you know, the county's going to take it over, well, somebody's still got to know about the programs. Somebody's got to still know about, you know, how well we're doing. Somebody's going to have to know something to be able to do that job. That's, that's my concern.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams. Any other board members' comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Cox, would you like to say something? Mr. McClung?
No.
Ms. Carmack?
You're right, there needs to be oversight, but historically, there has been no oversight. That was what I tried to illustrate in my PowerPoint. We have had a communication lapse. There has been ineffective communication. There is no doubt about that. That is not to be debatable. And the email that you referenced, Mr. Williams, was one that was strictly between Mr. Shardine and myself, and I didn't share that with anybody because I knew the information was incorrect. And candidly, you got that information, that email, and you subsequently shared it with everybody when that, in fact, information was not correct in that email. So I just wanted to make, point that out for clarification. One last thing, if we remain as an administrative board, those reports that you want to see do not have to come to us. Am I correct in that, Mr. Latchney?
I've got no opinion on this matter.
That's right. I forgot about that, yeah. Okay. That's all.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Cox. Mr. Chairman. Ms. Carmack, you're our representative on the board, and you said those reports wouldn't have to come to us. You could give them to us, could you not?
I could.
Okay, that just, I mean, so the information is available. I have, you know, it's a pretty interesting description by Mrs. Carmack of things not going well and things that need to be in a, a different world, if you will. My conundrum is I don't see your alternative as improving anything. The solution that you give us, it's the only other solution you have, I understand that, okay? I don't see that. I have no faith that that's going to help what's going to happen. So I'll tell you all right now, I don't find either choice attractive, and so I will be, when we go to vote, I'm going to be abstaining, because I won't support either one of them. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Chairman, if I may, I'll comment. I agree with Mr. Cox. I think it sums it up very well. I think Ms. Carmack did a good job of putting up on the screen the differences. I think that was very useful. What I, what I'm perplexed about is, just like Mr. Cox, I don't know what the solution is at this moment tonight in taking action and moving it over to the county. That, that's the problem that I have. Anyway, that's my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I'll be very brief.
Thank you.
Very brief. I think Mr. Williams solidified my vote to make the change of everything that he said that this board should be receiving from them. It sort of leads me to that path that we should. So thank you for helping me make my decision to, to vote for the Advisory Board.
I'm here to serve, Mr. Chairman.
The, I think that's what we're all here for. We have to vote in order to serve, and the Director does work for the board up to this moment, till we take a vote. The Director works for the board. So let's have a roll call vote, Mr. Smithers.
Mr. Williams.
Stand.
Mr. McClung.
Aye.
Mr. Cox.
I abstain.
Ms. Carmack.
Aye.
Mr. Barley.
I'm going to serve and vote.
Next up, case 02022-08, case 2201, the CUP. Mr. Williams District, Terry Hought, or Howe, maybe I didn't say that correctly, I apologize.
Go ahead, Ms. Hopkins, lead us on.
Which is not a use you guys probably get too much of. Against District One, a fairly large parcel, 132 acres, zoned A10. Again, it is for a country inn, so what is that? Here's the definition of it, it goes up to 50 guests or 20 rooms. The house in question here only has four rooms and is conditioned to have eight overnight guests and any accompanying children, which is fairly consistent with a lot of Airbnb regs throughout the state. The Planning Commission, there were some confusions at the planning commission level about what was being requested and asked for. They wanted to make sure that no public came to the property. My conversations with the applicant, that is not what she wants. Her letter very clearly states that she would like to have a small farm stand and a tea room as a part of the application, so why classify her as a country inn? It's because she wants to do the tea in addition to the lodging, and that's what this definition provides. The one issue I think that comes of this is how do you control the amount of public that gets there? And so we talked about possibly if you'd have reservations or whatnot. We've arrived at, basically, if you go over 50 people, which is the definition here, and also she's part of a Virginia Outdoor Foundation easement, that would violate both of those things. So it'll be basically subject to a zoning violation if she goes over that and have your CUP revoked. This is the house in question where the lodging would take place. It has currently been used as an Airbnb. I have received no complaints on it. Here is the property, you can see that what is going to be turned into the tea house in the distance, you get a very large parcel. Here is, again, the close of that tea house with a group of people there and a group of people around the main house. The other condition that was added to planning commission level was consistent with all of our rural event venues, and that is to control the outdoor sound amplification. So if that's a concern, that is in the conditions. She's already upgraded her septic system to accept increasing numbers of people, and the exit on to, oh gosh, saved my mind, Springs Road. Yuguenaut Springs Road. It currently has a Y shape. V dot does not like that, needs to be condensed into commercial entrance that is at at least a 60-degree angle to the road. All of that has been vetted. I will take questions if you have public comment here.
The applicant like to make a statement?
Just one small point of clarification, the room, the house has four bedrooms, yes, not rooms, that's okay. And that's all I'm planning to use in terms of overnight accommodations. And Mr. Hopkins pretty much covered everything, and I know you guys are tired, so I'm not going to say a lot, but I just want to say I'm the last member of my family, family to live on Terre Haute. It's been in my family about 200 years. I have no heirs to leave it to, so I would like to leave it in as self-sustainable a condition as I can financially and environmentally, which is why we have the Outdoor Foundation easement on it. I would like to eventually create or leave it to a nonprofit for the county and for future generations to enjoy. As far as any kind of impact on Yuguenaut Springs is concerned, it should not. I noticed in the county comprehensive plan that there is a plan to widen and straighten and realign intersections on Yuguenaut Springs Road, but I don't know when that's going to happen, and I'm sure you don't either. But, um, yeah, and I just, in closing, will say, throughout its history, the farm was a post office, it was a general store for the community where they sold baked goods and things my great-grandmother and grandmother did, so this is really just in keeping with what it's already been for many, many years, so.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll open up the public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to speak?
Hi again. I'm still here.
Hi.
I'm Betty McCracken. I live at 33918 Howell Road in Powhatan, and I have a letter in your packet that I was able to put in there earlier for you, but I'm here to reiterate in person what I'm saying, and I want to be supportive of my friend Teresa. We've been friends for a long time, about five decades, and I have been on her farm recently several times. I appreciate that she is really trying to create an environment of sustainability on the farm. She's doing a whole lot of really nice things there. She's making, she's interested in planting crops for pollinators. She's interested in improving soil health and water quality. She's planting, I've seen her plant flowering bushes along the creek, she's making a scenic pathway. She's getting ready to install a stream exclusion system for her, for some of the horses, and so I just request your support too, for Terre Haute Farm to be sustainable and continue on in the spirit that it was, it's been for hundreds of years. Thanks.
Thank you. Not seeing anyone else. Mr. Smithers, we have anyone on Zoom?
Zoom is clear, Mr. Chair.
We will close the public comment period, or public hearing. And board members, comments, suggestions, questions?
I can make a motion.
Yes, sir. Mr. McClung?
Mr. McClung, this is in my business, I can make a motion.
I was waiting for you.
He's wanting to go set some coffee over there. Could you all do it in a hurry?
I can do this in a hurry. I move to approve ordinance 0202206.
Second. Comments, questions? Not hearing any.
Mr. Smithers, 2208, or Mr. Williams? I think I meant 2208, Mr. Williams?
Yep.
Okay, you said 06.
I'm going to motion.
Okay.
It's E.
I'm sorry. You're right. You're right, thank you.
Roll call?
Roll call, Mr. Smithers.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. McClung?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Ms. Carmack?
Aye.
Mr. Barley?
Aye.
Next up, case 02022-09, case 2202CUP.
This happens.
Frank?
Yes, this is for an accessory dwelling, lot is zoned R2. The house is 3,700 square feet, the accessory structure is about 1,200 square feet, 800 of which is a living space. It's for elderly parents, be visiting half the year, rest of the time it'll be in office. Got no complaints about it. I'll take questions on the public hearing, in the interest of time.
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Long night for her.
Yeah, very long night.
Getting tired.
Understand.
It, this is, I am a local business owner. I am partnered with both Mill, Lakeside, I do floral design. I have a small business. I run it out of my home, it's very difficult, because I do do it year-round. I have a small business. I run it out of my home. It's very difficult because I do do it year-round. And in the winter months, it is pretty hard to run a large-scale floral business out of your home. But this is not going to be, there's no one coming and going. I don't even do meetings at my home. It is mostly just for storage. And then there also is going to be space for my parents who live in Surrey, but they visit us. I am basically their caretaker and, or will be their full-time caretaker. And I have a mother with Alzheimer's and a father who's got some disability. So that's pretty much, it's pretty basic. And there are 13 other structures identical to this in Valley Springs neighborhood.
Anything else you'd like to add?
No. Any questions?
Thank you. We'll open up to the public hearing. Anyone from the public wishing to speak? Not seeing anyone, anyone on Zoom, Mr. Smithler?
Ms. Toll, can you unchair, please? Zoom is clear.
Chairman?
We will close the public hearing. Board, yes, Mr. Williams?
I can make a motion.
You're good. I'll second it.
It's already been seconded.
2022-09.
Okay, so the motion is to pass 02022-09, case 22-02, the CUP.
I'll second it.
Comments, questions, board? Roll call, Mr. Smithler?
Mr. Williams?
Mr. McClung?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Ms. Carmack?
Aye.
Mr. Barley?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Motion passes five up. Yes, Ms. Carmack?
Um, I would like to propose that we move these accessory dwellings to an administrative oversight. It's, we, we pretty much seem to rubber stamp them, and it just adds a layer of, I think, unnecessary bureaucracy. Why don't we just give it to staff, and if it meets, checks the criteria?
That's a zoning ordinance change.
Correct.
Okay, which has to go to the planning commission.
Okay, yeah.
It has a whole, it has a whole process. Okay, you can't just say I do it.
But I would, I would recommend.
Talk about this another night.
Yes, absolutely. I wanted to recommend we approach that. Absolutely.
So there's a recommendation that we review that or send it to the planning commission to review.
Correct.
That we turn the accessory dwelling applications over to staff and just let them make the decision. But as Mr. Cox has stated, it's a zoning ordinance, so it has to go through the entire public hearing process, planning commission, et cetera.
If you vote on it tonight, you put it on the planning commission's plate. So technically, you could vote on it tonight to put it on the plate.
Come on, Bill. We're almost done. I do too. Five minutes. I move that we add this to the planning commission's agenda.
Second. Second.
Aye. Motion carries five up. Let's put that on the planning commission's agenda, Mr. Hopkins. No more detours. Okay, now to case 22-03CUP.
This is a, sorry, Child Daycare Center, 1510 Holly Hills Road. The applicant is asking for eight children. She currently sees five. Got no complaints on this case at all, and I got one phone call in support. Didn't even know the applicant, but was positive about it. And by everything I've heard, a good member of our community. So we need the childcare, so that's something else. Yeah, if you have any questions, let me know.
Is the applicant here? Would you like to make a comment? Okay. We'll open the public hearing. Not seeing anyone. Mr. Smithler, anyone on Zoom?
Zoom is clear.
Close the public hearing. Board members.
Mr. Chair, I can make a motion since it's in my district. It'll be approved. 0-2022-10, case number 22-03-CUP.
You're a little late with that second, Mr. Williams. Okay, any comments, questions, board members? Not hearing any roll call. Mr. Smithler?
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. McClung?
Aye.
Cox, Ms. Carmack, Mr. Barley?
Aye.
We'll slow on that, Mr. Barley.
I know. I know. Okay, we made it through that. Good. We're going to open up our last and final public comment period for the evening. Any individual, feel free to come down and speak. You have three minutes. If you're representing a group, you have five minutes.
Kenneth Hatcher, 3617 Trenton Road, chairman of the board. The case settled night on the Belgrade Solar Power System. Mr. Cox asked a good question. Why before did we have an advertised public hearing? And the county attorneys didn't really give definitive answer. Listen to the planning commission video, and at the conclusion, toward the conclusion, when they had voted that the applicant was not in compliance with the CUP comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan, the chairman turned and asked the county attorney, you know, what, what did they do now? And he said, it's not a legal question. You can go back and look at it. And he said something about four corners. You need a decision you need to make. And then the next question was like, what do we do? Do we go ahead and proceed with, you know, make a decision on it? And the county attorney's advice at that time was, no, that would be illegal to do that. And but tonight, it seemed to be a legal issue because the applicant came forward and was able to present the case there. And I just wonder, in the event that it's voted down, it's planning commission, and it is voted down, you have to report to supervisors, and the applicant appeals it, he's going to go before a judge, and he doesn't have a legal case? I mean, it seems somewhat confusion on the terms that have presented. And, you know, there was many things that could have been presented tonight about that solar farm that we didn't have a chance to. If you look at that future land use map, the protected area goes all the way to Carlothill Road, and it's in, in there. In June of 2004, there was a thunderstorm, and I think it rained about seven inches in this area. The water went down through there, and that's when the Powhatan dams were washed out. And the applicant said they were going to put the panels together as close as they could. It's going to make into basically an asphalted area. And then also, the resource there about historical Dunlow Academy and the comprehensive plan says it's supposed to be protected, you know, by a buffer and so forth. And it's in basically in, in the site where the panels are. The other element was, it was revealed that the applicant went to citizens over the weekend before he went to the planning commission, and he made adjustments and told them that he would move it back from the close to their house, that he would move it back into the area. He changed the area from what was presented to the planning commission and what the public had acknowledged of knowing. And whether it was determined whether he moved into the protected area had, had not been determined. And so it, it seemed all, you know, not the way it should be as far as letting citizens address things, making changes to the project, you know, over the weekend. And, and I don't know whether the planning director had an opportunity to review that. I mean, it's just all improper. It's totally improper. I just can't see at this point how it can possibly be turned down. If you say it, and that's what your job is, is to see that the applicant is in compliance with the comprehensive plan that the night you said he was. And so, going back to the planning commission of coming to you, I don't see you got the one vote, and that is, that is, it's already been approved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
David Barron, 3492, Richards Run, District Three. I like thanking Ms. Carmack for correcting me about the VDOT standards. Thank you. And I do appreciate that. And as you said, you respect for the landowner. That's great. Everything we've seen here tonight, to a certain degree, has been respect to one landowner. As far as citizens of Powhatan County, not picking you in particular, the three voting partners, so to speak, don't have much regard for the citizens of Powhatan County. We have to worry about redoing this thing for the one landowner. Put forth all this, make sure everything's done right for him. But Mr. Cox asks for extension to possibly look at maybe helping people out. I know a couple pennies ain't much. I mean, what the heck? Oh. We, you know, we can't take time to do that, but we got to take time for one landowner. And I heard representative for the landowner talk about, you know, trying to survive. Let me tell you one thing. I, I welcome anybody in business making money. I think it's great. But if that isn't a joke, that land has been used and used and used for timber. I think that's great. That's his prerogative. But to turn around to the citizens of Powhatan County and not give them the same consideration? It's sad. You know, to say that you, well, that 1.4 million, we got it covered. We got it covered. It's for this. It's for that. It's for this. Well, you know something? There's a whole lot of waste can be found in this government up here, just like we have to do at our own homes when times get tight. We own business. I've been in business 16 years. I haven't been 28 years as Mr., as our chairman. But you have to tighten up your business. Well, seems like nobody wants to do that with the county. Any government, I'm not just picking on y'all, federal, state, local. It's always all money falls from the heavens like manna, like did for the poor Israelites. Well, you know something? We ain't got so much manna to give. Yes, we want good schools. Yes, we want good everything. But you tell me that it's not at least 10% waste in the county government and the schools. Y'all don't, y'all have no idea what's going on in your county anywhere else, any business. At least 10%, but we don't have the opportunity to worry about that because we got to rush through and stick to that tax rate. Could have very easily had a discussion with the public, get involved, but nah, we don't want that. But the public does, but some members of this board don't. Thank you all. Sorry. It's been a long night, and I saw it took up so much of your time. Thank you.
Anyone on Zoom, Mr. Smithler?
Zoom is clear, Mr. Chair.
We'll close the public comment period. County attorney comments?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Any administrator comments?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Board comments? If anybody wants to go home? I got some comments. There's going to be a workshop, public workshop Friday, April the first. It'll be like the fourth or fifth one that you can come and comment about the budget or anything that you want to talk about with the finance. It's been open. Every one of them is open to the public, and there's two public comments for each one of them. So you're all welcome to come, and we invite you to come and tell us what you'd like to see us do. And then I have a piece of transparent information. Amelia County's tax rate's 51 cents, Cumberland's 75 cents. We're going to look at the tax rate comparisons. That's Cumberland 75 and Amelia 51. And we have lowered the tax rate in this county both years we've been on the board. And the last thing is, I don't think there's any employee being added to the county at, up to $150,000 worth of income.